I'd like to call this meeting of Prince William County School Board to order. Pursuant to the School Board Policy 139, school board member participation in the meetings by electronic communication, school board member Diane Ralston will participate in this meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. The clerk was so noted in the minutes of the meeting. Also, Dr. Latif cannot be here today due to a previous conflict. A motion is in order for the approval of the meeting agenda.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Second? I second. We're all confused. Thank you.
Yes.
You vote yes? Okay. Ms. Jessie votes yes? Moving on to the motion to enter a closed session. I'm sorry.
That's all right. The vote is seven yes, one absent. Dr. Latif, motion passed.
All right. Now, moving on to the motion to enter a closed session, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers and employees under VA Code 2.2-3711A1. Two, to conduct the annual goal setting for the 2022-2023 school year for the abudsmen under VA Code 2.2-3711A1. Three, to discuss with division council and staff actual or probable litigation and specific legal matters involving staff, specific staff and students under VA Code 2.2-3711A7 and 8. Four, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding policies and regulations pertaining to the employee conduct and personnel matters relating to specific employees which require legal advice and guidance as provided by VA Code 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Five, to consult with staff and legal counsel regarding the acquisition of real property for the construction of a school wherein the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the school board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy as provided by VA Code 2.2-37113. And six, to discuss and receive briefings by staff members related to the security of school facilities, the safety of persons using such facilities, and actions taken to respond to such matters where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the security of such facilities pursuant to VA Code 2.2-3711A19.
Thank you. A second?
Madam Vice Chair.
I second. Thank you. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Dr. Latif, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in one hour. The Prince William County School Board is now returning from open session to closed session. A motion is in order?
Madam Chair. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of November 2, 2022, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Any second?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Jessie.
I have a second.
Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Chairman Latif, motion passed.
Before moving on, I would just like to make an announcement that Dr. Latif will not be here today due to a scheduling conflict. Moving on to closed session action items, a motion is in order for 9.01.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Is there a second?
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Agabor.
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Chairman Latif, motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to 9.02, we need a motion.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the 2022-23 annual goals for the abudsmen as presented in closed session.
You need a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Jessie?
I have a second.
Thank you. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Chairman Latif, motion passed.
All right. Thank you. That is it for closed session action items. Now, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Dania Sharifi is the student representative tonight. Would you mind leading us? Thank you. All right. Moving on to our favorite part of the presentation, the Thriving Future Focus presentation. Thriving Futures Focus is an opportunity to highlight the exemplary work being accomplished in our schools that support our vision that every student will graduate with the knowledge, skills, and habits of mind necessary to create a thriving future for themselves and their community. We will begin tonight with Ms. Lori Williams representing the Woodbridge Magisterial District.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Alliance for a Healthier Generation, a leading children's health organization, named six Prince William County Public Schools as the 2022 America's Healthiest School Awardees. These schools are among 406 nationwide to receive this year's designation. Two schools from the Woodbridge Magisterial District have been recognized. We will begin tonight with our 2021 National Blue Ribbon School, Porter Traditional School. Porter Traditional is being recognized for strengthening social, emotional health and learning, and increasing family and community engagement. Principal Caitlin Inglemeyer-Flore is here tonight to tell us a little bit more about how her school earned the recognition and to introduce her colleagues.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, School Board, and Dr. McDade. My name is Caitlin Inglemeyer-Flore, and I am the proud principal of Mary G. Porter Traditional School. On behalf of myself and Ms. Mears, Assistant Principal at Porter, we are excited to be recognized this evening for being a 2022 America's Healthiest School, for our commitment to strengthening social, emotional health and learning, as well increasing, excuse me, family and community engagement. Our school community understands the importance of supporting students not only academically, but their social, emotional growth. We know, however, that our student success in school is led by the unwavering commitment of our teachers and staff. Through the Heels Program and the drive of our SEL team, who's here with me this evening, Ms. Maddy Bablack, Ms. Laura Mears, Ms. Tiara Owens, and Ms. Hope White, we're not only able to take care of our students, but we're able to take care of our teachers' social and emotional health as well. We focus on building community relationships by reaching out for resources and support, providing opportunities for parents to be able to come and receive support on how to help their students at home, including our first Parent SEL Night, where we were able to engage families in coping strategies discussed during guidance lessons, zones of regulation supports for parents, and we are excited to expand this opportunity this year to include our students. For our staff, we focused on providing opportunities to connect and engage with each other through teamwork activities, discussion on healthy habits, and allowing time for reflections on areas where we can strengthen. Throughout the year, we provided teachers with interest inventories to give us an understanding of how they were being supported and what we could do to do more. We are currently hosting a school-wide book talk on ONWARD that supports emotional resilience in educators. We understand that building social, emotional wellness in our community does not end here, and we will continue to show our commitment by adjusting to our community's diverse needs. We appreciate the support of the School Board, Dr. McDade, and Ms. Heather Wines for helping us in supporting our community needs through the Heels Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Inglemeyer-Flore, and congratulations to Mary G. Porter Traditional School. It is now my privilege to recognize Kilby Elementary School. Kilby is also being recognized for strengthening social, emotional health and learning, and increasing family and community engagement. This is exciting, as Kilby has a new principal, Ms. Chanel Evelyn, who is here to share more about this honor.
Good evening, everyone. We would first like to just thank Healthier Generations for giving us this opportunity to share all of the wonderful things that we are doing at Kilby. I'd also like to thank our wonderful professional school counselor, Ms. Jennifer Hart. She serves as our social, emotional learning coach, and she's done a phenomenal job leading our school and our community, and just making sure that we're providing our staff, our students, and our families with the resources that they need. The first area that we're being recognized is our family and community engagement. Kilby is a recipient of our 21st Century Grant, and we have what we call a Tiger 21 program. So, before and after school, we have academic programs for our students. We focus on academics. We focus on enrichment opportunities, and there's also a parental engagement component as well. We have Saturday stream sessions. We take our students and families on field trips, and we have some sessions where we're able to share with our parents some things that they can do with their students to just help with their academic achievements. We are also providing our parents with opportunities for what we call parent chats. So, our Student Services Committee, our school counselors, social workers, psychologists, and admin, they have sessions with our families. We provide families with the survey so that they can kind of share some of the things that they're interested in, and so we have our parent chats where we can kind of teach our parents some of the things that we're doing in school, and hopefully that it will carry over to their home life as well.
And good evening. So, the second area that we were recognized in was our social and emotional learning, and that was based on our implementation of a peace corner in our kindergarten through fifth-grade classrooms. What that looks like is having strategies and supports that all teachers can use for students that are engaging in maybe some behavioral challenges, because we understand that the year without instruction, because we were in a year of COVID, students were having to deal with certain things without the supports that they needed. So, we did utilize our peace corners. We also utilized our second sub-curriculum, and that was given to all of our teachers so they could understand the importance of the community, building a community, excuse me, with their students, and also having a school-wide language that could be used in and out of the classroom and in our community. And finally, we were also able, through the comprehensive school counseling program, that me and my cohorts were able to not only implement, but push out schoolwide, was able to promote our social and emotional learning. So, we do know that through the implementation of these programs and activities, they are the contributing factors that have led us to receiving this award, and we are so, so grateful for allowing you all to at least know some of the things that we're doing at Kilby Elementary. So, thank you, Dr. McDade. Thank you, Heather Wines, and thank you, Healthier Generations, for tonight. Thank you.
Just going to exercise a little point of privilege and say how much I appreciate both schools. They are so very different in my district, my district, but the hard work is exceptional, and I know my families really appreciate everything that you all do. I have seen Century 21 Grant with the Tiger Program in action, and been to numerous programs at Porter, and I just cannot ever thank you enough for all the work you do, for your staff, and the families and communities that surround where you're located. It is so very much appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Williams, and a huge congratulations to Porter Traditional School and the Kilby Elementary School. Thank you for being here tonight. It is now my privilege to introduce Ms. Lisa Agabor, the Coles Magisterial District, to recognize the next school.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I am proud to share that Parkside Middle School has also been named a 2022 America's Healthiest School. Parkside alum here too, so extra congratulations. Parkside Middle School has been recognized for cultivating staff well-being. The principal, Dr. Mary Jane Boynton, could not be here tonight, but the incredible Ms. Erin America, the Assistant Principal, is here to tell us more.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board, and Dr. McDade. My name is Erin America. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Parkside Middle School. And on behalf of Dr. Boynton, our principal, who regrettably is not able to be with us this evening, we wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Alliance of Healthier Generations for awarding Parkside the America's Healthiest School Award in the category of cultivating staff well-being. A special thank you to our Parkside Heels coaches for all their hard work and time to provide our teachers and staff with support and opportunities to decompress and regroup during a very challenging school year. A special thank you to Ms. Gaspari, one of our Heels coaches, who oversaw this application process. Through PWCS Heels Initiative and Parkside Heels coaches, our teachers and staff were provided chiropractic services, time with therapy dogs, some friendly staff competitions, monthly socializing opportunities, training on stress management, weekly newsletters to celebrate and highlight staff members, and how can we not forget axe throwing? Our focus on staff well-being allowed our teachers and staff to be very best for our students each and every day. In closing, on behalf of Dr. Boynton, I would like to thank Dr. McDade for your inspirational leadership, and Ms. Porter Lucas for her continued support and guidance. We are Parkside Proud.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Agabor, and congratulations to Parkside Middle School. Three of the six schools being honored this evening are located in the Princeville District. Buckland Mills Elementary School was recognized for strengthening social, emotional health and learning. Their principal, Maxidah O'Dodra, could not be here tonight, but their counselor, Kayleen Scott, is representing the school. Ms. Scott, could you please say a few words?
Good evening. My name is Kayleen Scott, and I am one of the school counselors and SEL coaches at Buckland Mills Elementary School. We received our award under the category of strengthening social, emotional health and learning. Last year, we implemented the Zones of Regulation. The Zones of Regulation is an approach that students use to support their development and self-regulation. All the different ways children feel and the state of alertness they experience are categorized into four zones. The children learn to know which zone they are in and how to get back to the green zone. Green is calm and ready to learn. Each room in the building is equipped with a calm corner. These calm-down corners have items like pillows, stuffed animals, fidgets, books, and breathing techniques. The calm-down corners help students when they are feeling stressed, frustrated, or overwhelmed. They can regulate their emotions in the calm-down corner and return to their desk when they are ready to focus and learn. Thank you to the Buckland Mills staff, students, and community for working together to support the social, emotional well-being of our students. Also, thank you to Heather Wines, School Board, and Dr. McDade.
Thank you so much. Piney Branch Elementary School has been recognized also for strengthening social, emotional health and learning, tobacco-free schools, and school health services. Principal Steve Thorne is out of town this evening, but Monica Sobers, the Assistant Principal, is here to say a few words. Ms. Sobers?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. On behalf of our Piney Branch community and Mr. Thorne, I just want to thank the Alliance for Healthier Generations for the privilege of being one of America's Healthiest Schools. I'm joined tonight by one of our school counselors, Mrs. Bigler, who is also one of our Heels coaches, and a large part of the reason that we are here to accept this honor tonight. Piney Branch was awarded this for our practices in four different areas, but most notably was our cultivation of staff well-being and our strength of social, emotional health and learning. We've been using mindful practices at Piney Branch for a few years, including a mindful moment every morning on our news show, brain breaks throughout the day where teachers are incorporating those self-regulation tactics, and also a calm corner in every classroom that students are able to use whenever they need to. Our Heels coaches are super excited to continue all of the wonderful initiatives that we started last year, this year, to continue to build our social, emotional health of our students and our staff. So, we thank you all. Thank you, Dr. McDade. Thank you, School Board. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. And our final school to receive this recognition is Victory Elementary School, owning the award for cultivating staff well-being. Principal Chad Ray is here this evening to share a little bit about this recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I'm just grateful to work with such dedicated SEL coaches and the opportunity to, you know, continue the Heels funding for those positions, and wanted to introduce our coaches, fifth-grade teacher Carol McQuillan, and professional school counselor Jessica Kaiser, and Ms. McQuillan is going to say a few words.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity from the Healthier Alliance. We are so proud to be here representing Victory. We earned this award because of cultivating staff well-being, and you've heard the phrase, "a happy wife, happy life." Well, we believe it's a happy teacher, happy school. When we did little tiny things, like we interviewed Walking Wednesday. Every Wednesday, we take a five-to-10-minute walk outside. When you see the kids just getting that extra movement around, everyone just relaxes for a minute, and they're happy. And crumble cookies every Friday doesn't hurt. But we are really proud of the work that we've been doing. Mrs. Kaiser and myself meet weekly, and we just come up with many ideas to help our teachers alleviate some of the stress that we all know that we have. So, we're just very grateful and proud of our school victory. And once a Westie, always a Westie. So, thank you, members of the School Board, and Dr. McDade, and Heather Wines.
Thank you all so much for being here tonight and for everything that you do. Just so proud to be up here listening to your stories and for everything that you do. Thank you so much. Congratulations to our six Healthiest School winners. I will now turn this over to Dr. Lutania McDade to help conclude this portion of this School Board meeting, after her remarks, who will take some pictures with these amazing winners.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Congratulations to all of our schools, Buckland Mills, Kilby, Piney Branch, Victory, Parkside Middle, and Porter Traditional, on earning the 2022 America's Healthiest School Award. I am so incredibly proud of all of the work that you are doing every day for your school communities, and this prestigious distinction really demonstrates your commitment to a positive climate and culture. I want to thank you each for your leadership in this space to ensure that every single student is in an environment where they can thrive. Thank you so much. Congratulations, and keep up the great work. We are so proud of all that you are doing for your school, students, your families, and your community.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. I now invite our honorees up forward so we can take a picture.
which time, okay? Ready? On three. One, two, three. Let's do another. One, two, three. One, two, three. Got it. One, two, three. One, two, three. And just to be safe, we'll do one more. One, two, and three. Got it. Thank you. One, two, three. All right. Another one. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, and three. Got it. Good. Ready? One, two, three. Next one. One, two, three. And last but not least, one, two, and three. Good. One, two, three. Next one. One, two, three. And one, two, and three. Good. One, two, three. One, two, and three. And one, two, and three.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Is there a second? Oh, don't I need a second? Is there a second? I second. Thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull the appointment of Safe Schools Advisory Council representatives to board matters.
All right. I'm going to do that for you right now, but you're going to have to give me about two minutes to do it, and then you all will need to refresh so you see the consent agenda reflected correctly.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I wanted to thank the individuals who have agreed to serve on the appointment, on the Gifted Education Advisory Committee. I once upon a time served on that committee. It's a great committee and has a lot of great dedicated people. So I appreciate the time. It's a volunteer appointment, so that's just hours and time and out of the goodness of their hearts. So I do appreciate the people who are serving on that. I also wanted to highlight the new course offerings for the 2023-24 year of the Bio2 Microbiology and Forensics and Bio2 Anatomy and Physiology, The Unmanned Aircraft Systems and Introduction to Early Childhood Education. I think those are great courses. I am glad to see that we have, that we are increasing some of our science offerings in particular, but also our CTE offerings. So I'm pleased with this, and I think this is a good advance, advancement for our students to offer these new course descriptions. That's all, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Ms. Simpson, should we wait a few more minutes? Ms. Simpson, are we good? All right, please vote. Ms. Lawson, how do you vote? One more time, Ms. Lawson?
Yes.
Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Chairman Latif, motion passed.
All right. Thank you. Now we move on to 13 citizen comments. Those citizens who have signed up in advance of the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is one hour, and citizens may speak on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of PWCS. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, or you will be asked to step aside. We ask that the audience please be respectful of each speaker and refrain from any clapping, jeering, cheering, to avoid disruption of the meeting. If you do not, the board will recess, and I will ask that the room be cleared to restore public order. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I'm going to name the first five, and then you can come sit in the front if there are seats. Jennifer Rakoski, Lorena Clark, Marion Johnson, Ken Nar, Jalen Curtis, Cusus. Jennifer Rakoski.
Hi. Good evening, Vice Chair Jackson, Dr. McDade, and school board members. My name is Jennifer Rakoski, and I reside in the Okaquan District. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the proposed changes to policy 795, Notice of Schoolwide Presentations or Readings. As a former classroom teacher and current employee in facilities, I was immediately taken aback by it. I reached out to several principals, teachers, and librarians to get their opinions in case they were seeing a side of it that I was not, no longer being in the classroom. Their concern was even stronger than mine because they do know the possible impact of this policy, especially at the elementary level. Here are some of the concerns raised. What is any book or other material will be read, shared, performed, or broadcast to all students by any person? If the music teachers are performing for all students and staff, does that mean every piece of music needs to be advertised in advance for parents and guardians to review? What if there's an issue with one song? Does a student get pulled from that one or the whole performance? Music teachers are already so dedicated to providing cultural and musical diversity in their repertoire. Allowing this undermines their expertise and dedication. If a picture book or poem is read over the announcement, where can the student be moved to so they can't hear the text being read? What is school-wide? What if it's something just for the grade level? Does that need to be sent out in an update? Sometimes when teachers or librarians read a book at the grade level for classes, they're doing it based on the level of the students. What about opting for a book related to social emotional learning topic during counselor lessons or class meetings? How does this benefit the student who will not only miss out on important discussions and lessons, but continue the behavior that caused the lesson to begin with? What about school-wide non-academic presentations for anything from awards, ceremonies, to pep rallies, to required county programs like Say Something Training? Where does this slippery slope stop? In general, it left a bad feeling in most educators' stomachs. Teachers, principals, librarians, counselors, school staff, they're generally overtaxed. When they read this, most of them saw it as just one more thing being added to their already overburdened plates. As you may have noticed, when I started my speech, I said when I saw the policy, I reached out to others for their, to get their feedback. I asked that you please reach out to those that are in the schools to get their feedback and help alleviate their concerns. After talking with some of the school board members, I understand your intent behind this policy, but it is broad and open to misinterpretation and potential abuse. And I don't see the timer, so hopefully I have a little bit of time. Thirty seconds. Yes, thank you. If you have, this past week, elementary educators in particular, the workday was this past Monday, but they also had to do parent conference day, so they had to get their report cards done in advance. It would have been better to have the parent conference day on November 8th, so they could have had time last Monday to prep, and then on November 8th to meet with the parents. And on a final note, on the calendar, April 8th, 2024, is a total solar eclipse in North America. It'd be cool to have an additional day off so people can chase totality. So, science nerd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Simpson, is the timer going to be? Okay. Okay, will we give people a 30-second? Okay. All right. Lorena Clark, they will give you a 30-second announcement. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. McDade and board members. My name is Lorena Clark. My name and address is on file with the clerk. Imagine, 700 students. One-on-one testing is required to administer a test. Each test takes 20 minutes on average. That's 233.3 hours to test those 700 students. There are seven hours in one school day, not counting lunch. 33.3 school days to test those 700 students. Three teachers to administer that test takes it down to 11.1 days. The test has to be given, scored, and entered into a program that is not clearly defined on how to enter the data or what format after it's been scored, all by Thanksgiving break. Four more school days until the educators that are giving this test are trained in how to give it, not how to score it. That gives nine days to give the test, score it, and enter the data for others to review. Those nine days will require subs to cover the classes for the educators who are pulled to give the exam. Zero are the number of known subs that are available or willing to come to the school and sub. Zero, the number of educators at the site that actually know what the test is for or why the test is given. The new test might make sense to those here in this building. However, this test is another in a series of tests that pull students from instructional time. This test looks very similar to another test already being given to the students. Why duplicate tests with different publishing companies that cost taxpayer dollars? This is just one example of the numerous times students are pulled from direct instruction to take a test for somebody to look at data. The state just sent a round of data that shocked everyone, saying that our math and reading levels have dropped. Did the state look at how many times those students were pulled from direct instruction so other data could be gathered? No. Does the data show that there are 42 unit, county-level HMH reading tests at the beginning, middle, and end of the year, SOL and VGA tests for the fourth grade, which pulled or interrupted direct instruction during the year? Does the data show there are 69 unit, county-level benchmark, SOL, and VGA tests for eighth grade, which pulled or interrupted direct instruction during the year? We need to streamline what data we're looking for to use less tests so the students can stay in the classroom for direct instruction. Data for the data's sake is not acceptable or valid data. Let's get back to the purpose of education and let the educators do their primary, primary job of educating. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Marion Johnson.
My name is Mary Ann Johnson. There has been a lot of talk recently about how we can move forward from the last two years of lockdowns, forced masking, segregation of students, and dropping test scores. That talk has primarily focused on amnesty for those who champion these things. The idea is that we sweep aside the divisions of the past two years and start over fresh. Unfortunately, this idea is misguided. Moving forward in a meaningful way is impossible without addressing the other A-word being discussed in the public forum: accountability. Accountability is something that is important to me as a Virginia parent with children in public schools, and something we certainly know is important to Virginia's voters. So I'd like to address the biggest concerns of thousands of parents in Prince William County. For context, I am out every week meeting with concerned parents and citizens all over our county. As you know, I'm an involved parent. I put in the effort. Chief among parents' concerns, the recent report card grading students' test scores around the country. And we parents are appalled. Northern Virginia public schools are typically rated the best nationwide. But according to the NAEP report card, Virginia schools have dropped to dead last in 2022. We are ranked at the very bottom of falling test scores. That's an atrociously long way to fall, which brings me back to accountability. Why do you think our county failed so miserably? Could it be because our school board actively fought to keep kids home when schools across the country remained open and thriving? Could it be because the PWEA was busy with theatrics, driving around with baby coffins on their cars to scare parents into compliance based on irrational fears? Or could it be because you have all been focused on ensuring that social causes receive more attention than academic? With the love this board shows for DEI, SEL, and CRT, it's a wonder educators had any time at all to focus on providing academic education. But don't take my word for it. The scores speak for themselves. Like I said, accountability is important. I attended last month's board meeting with other concerned parents. We came here to hear the discussion on test scores and academics, but instead, this board prioritized a two-hour discussion on collective bargaining. After you voted for a meaningful resolution, the dozens of educators that packed this room left angry and shouting, leaving the room nearly empty. Only a few of us remained until midnight to hear the report on the falling test scores. Did the PWA leave because they didn't want to see the Fs on their report cards? This is reprehensible and inexcusable, and it provides voters irrefutable proof of your priorities: accountability. You have thrown out any credibility and have abdicated your responsibility to the children in order to placate a special interest group. Before parents vote, no confidence in your leadership. We respectfully ask that you stop giving in to the woke mob and start educating our children. We do not want to wait until 2025 for the scores to come up. We want it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken Nar. Jalen Cusus. And then after him, we have Kathryn Alford, and then Jennifer Roberts. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent McDade, Madam Chairwoman, school board members. My name is Jalen Cusus. I live in the Woodbridge District. I have come before the board tonight to discuss safety and security in our schools. And just recently, there was another incident where a weapon was borrowed to the side of Prince William County School. Again, another weapon. How long must we wait before we do something? Parents shouldn't have to worry whether or not their kids will come home. Teachers shouldn't have to risk their lives at work, and students should feel safe at school. I have recommended to the board that we add metal detectors to combat this issue. Let me make this clear. Adding metal detectors does not fall on a political spectrum. Safety and security for our students and staff isn't a political talking point. It's common sense. I would also like to make clear that I'm well aware that metal detectors won't solve all the issues. This is a short-term project to do, something now to ensure the safety of our schools now. The long-term project is investing into mental health for our students. I also highly encourage the board to be transparent with the community and avow late, avow late any public fear that some students, parents, and staff may have concerning safety. Thank you for your time. My name is Jalen Cusus, and I reside in the Woodbridge District.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathryn Alford, and after that, Jennifer Roberts.
Before I start speaking, I have an eye disorder, so it's a little hard for me to see. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kathryn Alford, and my address is on file. Tonight, I would like to speak about transportation's financial and emotional abuse of teachers and staff at my school, Signal Hill Elementary. I have worked at Signal Hill for 19 years. My hours are 9:05 to 4:05. School ends for the children at 3:55. I'm a salaried employee, so I come into work about an hour early and stay later to catch up on working quiet solitude. I choose to do that because I understand that some of my work must be completed on time, and I prefer to keep my instructional time free to teach my students. However, since day one of this school year, I look out the window at 3:55, and two buses might be at our school. Two years ago, 20 buses would be lined up and ready to go, and students would be gone by 4:05. I have about 18 out of 24 students staying in my class every day until 4:25 to 4:45. Have you tried completing tasks while tired first graders wait for their bus? I do not get paid for my free childcare. What about teachers with children of their own? Who is compensating them for extended childcare costs? What about our teachers who have middle school students at home alone? Transportation places blame on our carpool line. The carpool line has increased and become dangerous with impatient drivers. The increase is due to the lateness of the buses. Parents need to get students to after-school activities. This situation is not equitable to Signal Hill employees, as other elementary teachers in the county leave on time or get paid for keeping students. We do not. This situation is dangerous for students who will be walking home in the dark as winter approaches. Are you okay with shouldering the responsibility of a student getting hit by a vehicle or abducted? Is this school system okay with working employees against their will and not paying them? That's slave labor. Teachers are leaving because of working conditions. You are willing to hire non-certified applicants to fill our place. Do parents know their children are being taught by unco... I have about 18 out of 24 students staying in my class every day until 4:25 to 4:45. Have you tried completing tasks while tired first graders wait for their bus? I do not get paid for my free childcare. What about teachers with children of their own? Who is compensating them for extended childcare costs? What about our teachers who have middle-school students at home alone? Transportation places blame on our carpool line. The carpool line has increased and become dangerous with impatient drivers. The increase is due to the lateness of the buses. Parents need to get students to after-school activities. This situation is not equitable to Signal Hill employees, as other elementary teachers in the county leave on time or get paid for keeping students. We do not. This situation is dangerous for students who will be walking home in the dark as winter approaches. Are you okay with shouldering the responsibility of a student getting hit by a vehicle or abducted? Is this school system okay with working employees against their will and not paying them? That's slave labor. Teachers are leaving because of working conditions. You are willing to hire non-certified applicants to fill our place. Do parents know their children are being taught by unqualified people? If you ignore this problem with the buses, you are adding to employee dissatisfaction. You will see more young and veteran teachers leaving the school system. I want to look out my window at 3:50 and see 20 buses ready to go. I want transportation to solve this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Roberts.
Good evening, Superintendent McDay, Madam Vice Chair, members of the school board, and other Prince William County staff members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jennifer A. Roberts of the Gainesville District. My address is on file. I would like to share my thoughts on Agenda Item 12.05, International Education Week, which will be observed by Prince William County Schools November 11 through November 18. I agree with the resolution and am a proponent of exposing our school community to learning opportunities that acknowledge and reinforce our connectedness and interdependence as a global community. I wholeheartedly value the development of healthy, global citizens, so much so that I co-founded the Global Studies Program at Mountain View Elementary School in 2016 to expose students to the contributions of people from all over the world through interactive learning experiences. The International Education Week resolution states in part, "By studying the history, culture, and languages of other countries, students gain invaluable insights into how others live and learn important lessons about respecting their fellow citizens." I agree with this perspective and want to make sure that while we, as a school community, are learning about the history, culture, and languages of other countries, that we do not neglect accurately teaching the important history, culture, and language of African-American, Latino, Asian, and a plethora of other community members of color who live and work right here in Prince William County. I implore us to proactively and frequently seek and implement creative ways to engage students, families, and communities in truthful, meaningful learning opportunities in an effort to develop critical thinkers who are empathetic and respectful. Let us prioritize understanding the diverse racial and cultural histories of our citizens and provide intentional and ongoing learning spaces for students and staff members of color to be seen, validated, and respected. By actively valuing the voices and experiences of our racially and culturally diverse community on a local level, we can develop leaders who are equipped to represent Prince William County on a global stage. Thank you.
Thank you. The last three, I'm going to call their names if they wish to come forward. Jeffrey D. Fuller, Christopher Funderberg, and Jorge Melendez. Jeffrey Fuller. Christopher Funderberg.
Hello. My name's Chris Funderberg. And originally was planning to give a little history of SEL, but I'm going to pivot a bit tonight. I'm a little bit confused about the dog and pony show we just saw here for the Thriving Futures presentation. We heard a lot about what staff has done and implemented, but we didn't hear anything about what the outcome for the students was. Has this increased their academic performance? Has it had any positive impact on the student body altogether? And who is Alliance for Healthier Generation? I've never heard of that organization before. I could start an organization, and by next week be handing out participation trophies to schools across the country. So if we're going to recognize people for these things, I think we should not just concentrate on what was done, but what the outcome of what was done. So with that, let me get back onto track and see if I can fit this in or not. Okay. So I imagine most of you know what SEL is and how it is implemented in Prince William County, but what I want to review, the history and how it got to where it is today before diving into its use. It goes back to Yale psychologist and civil rights activist James Comer. He wanted to explore why most black inner-city schools in Hartford, Connecticut were failing so bad and introduced the idea of whole-child teaching. This consisted of intervening with students in an environment of the civil rights movement, the fall of institutional racism, the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and the broken homes that many of them came from. By taking these factors into account and helping the students understand and process these things, the schools were able to make a dramatic increase in graduation rates and college entrances in just five years. Two schools where he introduced the whole-child approach rose from the bottom of the academic list to the top. It was truly a miraculous turnaround and success, and Comer has been rightfully lauded for what he accomplished. However, over the years, applying this program in other schools in the country has been very hit or miss. It turns out that the success of the program depended a lot on the home environment of the students, the teacher's skill in buy-in, and student buy-in. We're finding that it worked great at an individual approach for at-risk students but had marginal or backward success in other environments. By the early 1990s, the whole-child educational approach was picked up by the Fetsor Institute, and SEL was officially born. This is where Castle, the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, was created as the implementation arm. It meshed with critical education theory, and the intensive surveying portions were added. Castle's SEL had limited success in getting established in schools until the passage of the 2015 Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. This act mandated at least one domain of non-academic competency reporting from every school receiving federal education money. In steps Castle with a ready-made system to provide this necessary reporting that...
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Jorge Melendez.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jorge Melendez. I'm here in support of the prevailing wage resolution on the agenda today. As a member of the UA Local 602, I have been able to build a life for me and my family here in the Prince William County because of the wages and benefits that I made through my work as a union firefighter. As a young apprentice, I was able to get free and earn, as you learn, training from my union. Today, my job is to talk to workers, young people, to offer them the same opportunities that I once had: to earn a pass, a pass to the middle class through a good job in the construction industry. A prevailing wage resolution will allow me to offer even more opportunity for the Prince William residents to get jobs with good wages and full family healthcare and a pension to allow people to retire with dignity. We need to be offering more opportunities for young people to have an alternative to college. This prevailing wage resolution will ensure that the schools we build in our community are being done by a local residence with good wages and benefits. I would thank you for the opportunity to speak into you.
Thank you to those who came and spoke tonight. Next, we will move on to item number 14, which is the Office of the Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Tonight is the 2023-2024 Annual School Calendar, and it is on for information. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. McDay.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I would like to invite our Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Rita Goss, to the podium to share and present an update on the 2023-2024 School Calendar.
Good evening, Vice Chairwoman Jackson, school board members, and Dr. McDay. Tonight, we are going to present on the calendar choices and options for next school year and also provide the results to the poll that was put out for the community. So here we go. Some background information for everyone is that the Starting Place was looking at this year's calendar that was approved last November by the school board. We also took a look at what are the requirements from the state of Virginia governing how many days in school, 180 days, or that 990 instructional hours that we must have for students. We also took a look at our ability here in Prince William County to start school up to two weeks before Labor Day. However, Prince William County is one of the school systems that's also required to provide our students a four-day Labor Day weekend. The calendar development process, we started out with some initial drafts that were developed for consideration by the Calendar Committee. And those drafts took into account the holidays that were added for this school year. And we took a look at some of the changes being for start and end dates for staff and the length of the winter holiday were some of the focus points. The Calendar Committee held two meetings. The first was on September 6 to look at those original drafts. And then the Calendar Committee met again on the 23rd. On the 23rd, they considered the drafts that had been approved by Executive Cabinet that were brought back to them. They were able to discuss those options, ask questions, provide suggestions. In between those two meetings, the Calendar Committee members were able to provide feedback to the Calendar Committee facilitator, Dr. Icorn. And then we again elicited feedback from staff and the community through the public poll that was posted. Those holidays, again, that we looked at, those four additional holidays that were added to the calendar for the 21-22 school year, reflect the diversity of PWCS. And the calendar options we took into consideration, those four new days, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Diwali, and Eid of the Year. And we looked at those observances, if they impacted school days. In the proposed option, the winter break incorporates the Christmas holiday, spring break incorporates Good Friday, Easter, and the start of Passover. Calendar options that were looked at, you see here on this slide, the first column is the 22-23 calendar, and then we have the three options laid out side by side. What you see in the differences are the start dates, when our new teachers would come, on August 8 or 9 in Option 1, the 9th and 10th on Option 2, and the 9th through the 11th on Option 3. All teachers would report, you see the date that they reported this year. The difference in those options are by several days. All teachers would report either on a Thursday for Option 1, a Friday for Option 2, or that following Monday for Option 3. The start date for school, for students, is the same for all three options. It's August 21. A winter break is where there is a difference between the options again. The first two options maintain that two weeks for winter break, and the third option is just slightly a few days shorter that you will see impacts the last day of school for students. A spring break is the same timeframe on all three options. And the end date, as I indicated, is where you see a difference because of that difference in the two-week winter break. You see the end date for June 12 for students on the first two options, and on the third option, you see June 7 is the last day of school. The teacher last day does also have some variance. In Option 1, that last day is June 13, and Option 2, it's June 14, and on Option 3, it's June 12. So a summary of these options, calendar options, the start and end dates. For the start date, it's all the same for students, August 21. The end date difference is those first two options have a last day of school for students of June 12, and that third option has June 7. All of them have the total number of instructional days as 180, as required by the state. The key differences are, again, the days in which our teachers start and the last day of school for teachers. And then that Option 3 has the difference of a few days of winter break is slightly We did the public poll, which allowed staff, students, and community members to provide input to the public poll for those three options. We had over 9,000 respondents complete the entire poll. And looking at the results, plurality of respondents, about 48%, chose Option 3. Option 3 would have the slightly shorter winter break and students getting out on June 7. And you see here the percentages of the parents and the staff and the students who selected that Option 3. The key themes that emerged, because in the poll, community members, staff, and students were also able to provide some written comments or suggestions. Some of the prevailing themes were, some families indicated, and some folks who filled that out, a desire to extend winter break and have an even longer winter break. And then we also heard from families and community members and staff that they would like to reduce the number of holidays that are currently in the calendar. So after the calendar is selected by this board, everyone will be able to access that calendar online at the pwcs.edu website under the calendar once it's approved. And once the student calendar, this instructional calendar, is approved, the employee calendars will be built and published as well. And of course, folks can sign up for that iCal subscription that will also allow for folks to see the calendar.
Is there any questions for Ms. Goss? Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Ms. Goss. That was informative. I have a question. My first question is, I have several questions. For returning from the winter break, is that the same for all three calendars? I don't think we have access to, like, every single day off, do we? Or could we look at that in greater detail by chance? And are those the same for all three calendars? Meaning, I'm assuming it's January 2?
It is, but I'm just double-checking. I have all three calendars in front of me, so I just want to make sure. So yes, we would be returning January 2.
January, okay. And then the 9,000 number of respondents to the survey, correct me if I'm wrong, but that seems like it's a pretty good feedback. Is that pretty good feedback for our division-wide surveys and polls?
It is. My understanding is one of the highest numbers of respondents that we've had to a calendar survey.
Okay, so good job on getting parental input. It seemed like it was a bigger number than I'd remembered in the past. And then I wanted to ask one ask, and can we look at the actual days to provide some input? I know we've received some teacher feedback on October 31 versus November 1 and how November 1 might have been a better day off, and there might have been another thing like that with the calendar. Is that something that we, as a board members, could weigh in on? Or do we have somebody who's kind of looking over that with a little bit more finely-toothed comb?
Are you, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question. Your question is about the days that would be cited as workdays for teachers?
Yeah, all the days, the complete calendar. Like, if I just wanted to give it a once-over and apply some...
So all of those options are attached in Board Docs, where you can see all of the dates for each one of those calendar options. And you can also see where those workdays are and where those holidays are and how they fall in each of the months. Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. And the last question I have is the key themes, those two at the very bottom, the extend winter break and then the reduction of holidays. I mean, it seems like they're a little bit mutually exclusive, but not entirely. Are we going to, when we get feedback like that, when citizens write comments in where they're like, "I like it, but I'd like a little bit more of this or that," what plans do we have to dive in deeper on that? Or are we going to dive in deeper on those?
So we always have the opportunity, when we're looking at creating calendars in the future, to make sure that we consider that and we... in the future, to make sure that we consider that and we include that as a part of our, when we develop options and calendars for the calendar committee to, to look at, that we take that feedback into consideration.
Okay, so for next year?
I'm sorry, just to respond to Ms. Wall, the one piece that the calendar committee does not have control over is the holidays. So the board, the board sets that. So we would bring that feedback, which we did, to the board, and that would be a policy decision.
Okay, and so, and what about like the end-of-quarter grading days and those kinds of things? Like holidays, yeah, but, you know, like the November 1st, October 31st thing, like when nobody really caught it, right? But maybe it would have been better to have it November 1st than October 31st?
So I, I think that is really good feedback about this year, right? And so you're correct, no one did, no one did catch it, although we did try to make some accommodations, right, with schools by saying that teachers could host their conferences on another day. And so we don't have that same type of thing in these calendars where the workday falls on like a holiday or a day in which perhaps folks would rather not have evening conferences.
But the day, and the days are typically in alignment with the end of the quarter. So that's how it falls.
Okay, 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 thanks.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the hard work that goes into it. I appreciate everything you do, Ms. Goss, and your calendar committee. I see a new face this year, our former principal, Dr. Icorn. So I, my comment is just to say thank you for all the hard work. I appreciate the number of respondents that you mentioned here. I think one of the things that I hear most is that teacher's voice is not included in the calendar. So it was nice to see, I think about 53% of the respondents were actual teachers and staff. I appreciate that. I think it, just to piggyback on a point that was made just now, I think it's important to understand that the calendar is yet again another tool that the school division uses that is sort of split duties, right? We, as the board, approve it, but a lot of the calendar is really operational in nature. We don't set when report cards come out, we don't set when, back in the day, it used to be interims, and those kinds of things. So I'm wondering if maybe with our calendar presentation, if, when we do vote on this because it's information tonight, if we could do like a little preventive, pre-op or prerequisite discussion, I guess, to sort of set the stage that people understand that some of it's operational, some of it is board-related, so they can sort of understand the differences. Because the calendar doesn't really get a lot of attention per se until there's a conflict on it. And then all of a sudden, it's like, "Oh no, how come nobody saw?" And people forget that 9,000 people plus have looked at all of these dates and options, but it's a combination of responsibilities. And I think that that's important to acknowledge, not for blame, but for understanding. Because I'm a parent too, I approve the calendar, but you can ask me in February when spring break is, and I will still have to like run and be like, "Oh no." Because it's just, I'm more concerned about code of behavior per se, and every family is different. So if, if we could do that a little bit to help our public understand a little bit more about our calendar and just go over when we do ask for volunteers to participate in the calendar committee, that would be fantastic. Because I think that's also another missing link. Usually by the time it gets here and we're approving, people are like, "Well, how do I get to serve on this?" So I think anytime we can encourage folks to share their voice preemptively is a good idea.
Absolutely. And the calendar committee has representation. We have teachers on the calendar committee, we have principals, we have other central office members and, and community members on the calendar committee who also, who all participate in that. And like you said, some of the calendar is organizational, right? So our, every quarter is about nine weeks long. And so that's kind of how we chart out the quarters so that we get to the end of the school year and, and we're mapping that out. So absolutely, we can, we can provide that information.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I just want to say, I love all of the holidays. I know it can be an inconvenience for a working parent, but again, I think it recognizes and gives the needed attention to that we are the 10th most diverse county in the nation. And we celebrate that. And I believe this year, and I think maybe last year, we had some new holidays, and the feedback from that was amazing. And speaking personally, it was a wonderful opportunity to explain different cultures in my house that I may not normally have thought to do. So I just will continue to express my support for that with recognition that I know it's difficult for working families, but there are options out there available for childcare and other sort of things to help out with that. So thank you.
Hey, Mrs. Jesse?
I too want to thank, hold on, sorry. I too want to thank the calendar committee for comprehensive calendar. Option three seems to be the magical option. I'm just wondering how you found all these days. And I'm, I'm wondering in your feedback, did you find that teachers report later August 14th? They go home earlier on June 12th? Students go home earlier on June 7th? And so they opted, I don't recall ever being on this board where people gave up the holiday, that Christmas holiday. It just seems like, was that the feedback you received from people when you got your survey information back also?
So we, we did look at, as you can see, two of those calendar options do maintain that two weeks at Christmas break, winter break that folks have in the past felt very strongly about. But there was feedback about having students get out a little earlier. And so the way to do that was we had to make the adjustment somewhere, and that adjustment happened over the, by shortening that winter break by a few days, which gives that earlier out, like you said, for teachers, but also for, for students.
Well, I, I'm impressed that we were able to find all those days. I'm also impressed that teachers and parents that, that holiday, that Christmas holiday. I expressed earlier my concern about the Thanksgiving break and the 250 employees, and I think that's already been stated in, when we had our two-by-twos. But I'm a little bit concerned that certain people have to take holidays breaks in order during that Thanksgiving break, and I just wanted to make a note of that. Thank you.
Okay, yes, that's part of the, the work calendar, so thank you for that feedback.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Rock?
This was built under the notion of 15 built-in snow days, correct?
So, well, we don't, we don't really build, build in...
But the number, but the number of hours would cover for 15 snow days, or how many?
Well, we built it based on the number of days or hours, right, that students are required to have instructional days. So we built it off of that requirement, 180 instructional days. And then you see the teacher times for start and end were built off the contract length, which is 195 days.
Okay, so how many snow days can we have without having to extend the school year?
I, I...
Do we know that?
It goes by hours. So, you know, we don't know what the, the winter will bring, but right now, the number of minutes that we have scheduled would buffer us so that if we have snow days, we wouldn't have to add any days on the back end of the calendar. I can't tell you exactly, you know, how many snow days, because we never know from year to year what the weather forecast will bring. So we, we call snow days based on severe weather. We don't try to count out and determine in the calendar. We just build in enough minutes within the calendar to cover us if we have significant weather events.
Understood. I guess I would just like to, it doesn't have to be given to us right now, but I'd like to see over the last 10 years, how many snow days we had each year. Because we always, I think, find, I mean, not always, unless there's an unusual situation, that we don't use many of these snow days. And teachers come to me and ask, you know, "Why don't we get the cash time back in if we're over the amount needed and stuff like that?" So I think either that needs to be explained better, because that is a continual thing that I hear every year, but this is just an ongoing thing I hear, and I don't know. I just think it needs to be addressed better.
Well, you know, we can bring some more information, but snow days, snow days are emergency situations, they are not guaranteed days. If there's an inclement weather emergency, we have to call, we do that. But these aren't days that are old, if you will. What we owe is instruction, instructional minutes to students so that they can learn. And if we have a situation where we do have an emergency, we want to make sure that it doesn't minimize the instructional minutes that students have on the calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any further questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Goss, and your team, and the calendar committee, and the rest of those who worked on the presentation today. Thank you for presenting. This is on for information, and we will vote on it next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 1501, Student Representative Matters. Our student representative on the dais this evening is Danya Sharifi, a senior at Gainesville High School. Ms. Sharifi?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. So as you guys know, first quarter has wrapped up for students, so I want to congratulate everyone, and a special congratulations to our seniors who may have submitted their college applications this past week. I would also like to thank our educators that helped us, our students become world learners and aware about the different cultures around the world in honor of International Education Week. Further, I would like to highlight the additional student efforts as well. Several of our schools have international multicultural or affinity groups for individuals of different backgrounds. The purpose of these clubs is to increase diversity and awareness within these schools to foster a collaborative environment where students can be free to talk with peers who have similar experiences as them. And most of these multicultural clubs host sort of international nights where the public is invited to the event, and students put on amazing performances, spoken word, traditional dances or song. And then students will bring in different dishes, so there's a buffet of food representing cultures around the world. They also set up booths representing the different cultures for attendees to learn more about the different traditions and holidays that they do participate in. And the student reps, Senna and I, are hoping to do something of a similar style of these international nights, but something as a countywide collaborative event where we connect all the students within these different organizations to create, set up booths for this type of multicultural event. And we will work towards brainstorming ways we can connect our students to greater insight for international education beyond the classroom. Additionally, in relation to this, the students are grateful to have the incorporated holidays as presented in the calendar, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, Diwali, Eid, all those especially incorporated in spring break, Good Friday, Easter, and the start of Passover. It is important to recognize these holidays as it not only helps students who may have fallen behind if they had to miss that day when they were celebrating the holiday, but they also really help other students who are not specifically within that culture understand what is the importance of this holiday. In my school's multicultural club, meaning we go over specific holidays each month and explain the significance. In addition to learning in the meeting, students are also able to see the significance of these holidays when the counties, you know, recognizing them within their calendars. And we do thank you for that. Additionally, just to touch base, we are in the works of planning our student workshop where we have individuals around the county come to the event and input their opinions, student opinions on topics that the reps and senators are focused on this year. With aims of this, we hope to connect their voice to the student, school board. That's all for tonight, but be sure to follow us on Twitter and contact us if you have any thoughts you want inputted as we want to best represent the students. Thank you, have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, Ms. Sharifi. Next, we will move on to the superintendent's time, Dr. McDade?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The end of the first quarter is the most critical of the four benchmarks throughout the academic year for actionable reflection. The end of the first quarter is a major evaluation benchmark to reflect on our students' engagement, our students' attitudes, their well-being, and their future so that we may act accordingly. And it is important to recognize that our students' engagement in the classroom begins at home. A family that is authentically engaged in their child's education supports their learning at home, understands the importance of learning, assists with monitoring their child's progress, advocates for their child, and is an active participant in the decision-making at the school and division level. In recognition of Family Engagement Month and aligned with Commitment 3 of our Strategic Plan, Family and Community Engagement, I invite families to contact your school and find out how you can partner with us through the school advisory councils, volunteering opportunities, and school-based events and activities. You can also visit pwcs.edu website for more information on how to get involved. The more students see the connections between themselves, their families, their communities, and their schools, the more dynamic, active, and significant their education will become. But to see these critical connections between themselves and their world, students need a positive attitude that motivates them to come to school and to be engaged in the classroom. And here I want to extend my gratitude for our Attendance Officer Appreciation Week. In our launching Thriving Future Strategic Plan, we have made a commitment to reduce chronic absenteeism by 5% because students who are in their seats on time for class will be in their seats on time for graduation. Our attendance officers work vigorously to ensure students are showing up to school, and they need our help to identify at-risk students so we can show these students we care about their well-being, we care about their safety, and we care about their future. Let us take this benchmark as an opportunity to change the lives of our students and make sure they are present in class every day. And present is not just a physical state. Present is an emotional, mental, and social state of well-being. School Psychology Awareness Week, which is November 7th through 11th, reminds us of this fact. School psychologists provide direct support and interventions to students and consult with teachers, families, and other school-employed mental health professionals to improve support strategies. They also work with school administrators to improve school-wide practices and policies and collaborate with community providers to coordinate needed services. Our psychologists care about the entire child, their family and community, their attitude, and their well-being to ensure they have a thriving future. As our students prepare for their future, as a school division, we must ensure each student is confident of the many paths available towards post-secondary success. These paths may be the military, career, academic, or entrepreneurial, and we want to help all of our students take the right steps after graduation. November is National Scholarship Month, and our college and career counselors are prepared and eager to meet with your child to plan the launch of their thriving future. All PWCS high schools have a college and career counselor to support students in their post-secondary aspirations. Encourage your seniors and juniors to set up a meeting with their college and career counselor and visit our PWCS Scholarship Resources and databases webpage for more information. In summary, take the opportunity to check in with your child, find out how they are engaging in the learning process, ask about their attitude towards school, talk about their well-being, and help them plan for their post-secondary aspirations. As a reminder, November 8th is a teacher workday and observance of Election Day. I encourage each voter to cast their voice in exercising their right to democratic freedom. November 11th, schools and offices are closed in observance of Veterans Day. I want to thank each of our veterans for their bravery, service, and commitment to our nation's ideals. Ms., Madam Vice Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. The next item on the agenda is 1701, Annual Report from the Ombudsman. Tonight, we will receive the annual report from the Ombudsman, Monique Brooks-Sine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to personally thank Chairman Latif, school board members, Dr. McDade, and the PWCS community for providing me with the opportunity to serve as Prince William County Schools Ombudsman. I am pleased to provide you with my first annual report. This report represents those concerns raised to my office for the 21-22 school year. Next slide, please. The PWCS Office of the Ombudsman was established in 2019. While the ombudsman field has been in existence for over 300 years, it is relatively new to the K-12 environment. Under 1% of all U.S. school districts have an ombudsman. PWCS is considered a leader in establishing the role within the division. The office provides parents, students, employees, and members of the school community with a safe place where they can discuss their concerns and address conflict in a non-judgmental way. Next slide, please. An ombudsman's role is twofold. First, they will work with the individual to address their concerns. They do this by serving as a neutral sounding board for their visitor and helping them to identify what could be causing the conflict while exploring all options which could be used to address it. Second... Second, they will work with the organization to provide feedback which focuses on improving the organization's overall health. An ombudsman serves as an early warning system by raising concerns which may not have surfaced without such an avenue. Next slide, please. The ombudsman role requires ombudsmen to conduct themselves as professionals who adhere to the following core values, such as fairness, integrity, equity, and empowerment. These core values were established by the International Ombudsman Association, or IOA. Next slide, please. The IOA also established the following principles of confidentiality, independence, informality, and impartiality or neutrality. These principles are the cornerstone of any ombudsman's office. Without their practice, the office cannot be effective. Next slide, please. Since the ombudsman's role is often misunderstood, this slide highlights for visitors what to expect when they contact the office. There will be the initial conversation, I will clarify my role, work with the visitor to understand the situation, analyze it, explore options available, and discuss next steps. When I clarify my role as the ombudsman, I explain to the visitor what I can and cannot do. For example, I cannot mandate change, maintain records, conduct investigations, or serve as notice to the organization. Next slide, please. I will now go through the data compiled for those who contacted the office for the 2122 school year. The total number of visitors was 194, which is a 13% increase from the prior school year. Next slide, please. Of the 194 visitors, 56% were employees, 37 were parents, guardians, and 7% were community members. Of the 109 employees, 63 were certified, 26 were classified, and 20 were administrators. Next slide, please. The IOA uses nine categories which an ombudsman can classify the type of concerns raised. Within these main categories are a number of subcategories. For the 2122 school year, the overall top three categories for all visitors were evaluative relationships, services, administrative issues, organizational, strategic, and mission-related. Evaluative relationships refers to questions, concerns, or issues with a supervisor or employee relationship. Services administrative issues refers to questions, concerns, issues about services provided. Organizational, strategic, and mission-related refers to questions, concerns, or issues that relate to the whole or part of the organization. I will now break down each visitor type to identify what category is of the highest concern for the visitor and the top two subcategories within that category. Next slide, please. The highest category for employee visitors fell within the evaluative relationship category, which is considered the supervisor and employee relationship. The most often expressed subcategories were respect treatment, which is how the employee believes they are treated, and retaliation, which is punitive behaviors for employees' actions. Next slide, please. The highest category for parent guardian visitors fell within the services administrative issues category, which is regarding the services provided by the organization. The most often expressed subcategories were administrative decisions and interpretation application of rules, which denotes decisions made on matters, and behavior of service provider, which is how the parent was dealt with by the school system. Next slide, please. The highest category for community visitors fell within the values, ethics, and standards category, which references the fairness of organizational values, ethics, and/or standards, the application of policies and/or procedures, or the need or creation or revision of policies or standards. The most often expressed subcategories were values and cultures, which identifies concerns about the values or cultures of the organization, and policies not covered, fairness or lack of a policy, or the application of a policy, policy not followed, or needs revision. Next slide, please. An important aspect of the ombudsman's office is to assist the organization by identifying systemic concerns. Conflict can serve as an opportunity for an organization to learn and grow. Because of the variety of concerns raised to the ombudsman's office, four predominant themes were identified for the type of visitors. These systemic concerns should not be considered definitive or a complete characterization of PWCS, but rather a starting point for further discussion. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, can you back up to the previous slide? Thank you. For employee visitors, the first systemic theme was work, climate, and culture. Employee visitors reported feeling stressed, anxious, and wanting to leave PWCS. These visitors described working in a toxic environment. Some employees believed raising these concerns would subject them to retaliation. In addition, the lack of employee professionalism unaddressed by leaders was also conveyed. Finally, several employees who contacted the office indicated their request to bring a silent witness was often met with perceived hostility. The second systemic theme was communication. Employee visitors spoke of a communication breakdown between employee and supervisor. Some employees perceived communication from their supervisor as limited and unclear, which they believed caused unnecessary conflicts and tension. The third systemic theme was performance evaluations. Employee visitors reported concerns regarding minor behaviors being addressed through a letter of reprimand instead of an informal discussion between employee and supervisor. Some employees perceived these actions could lead to their removal through the professional performance process. In addition, the use of the Professional Improvement Plan, or PIP process, was another concern. Some employees believe the PIP process is used as a punitive measure instead of one for improvement. The fourth systemic theme for employee visitors was policies and regulations. As new policies, regulations were enacted, some employee visitors reported disparate interpretations and applications of the policy regulations across PWCS. Next slide, please. For parent guardian and community visitors, the first systemic theme was navigating PWCS's processes effectively. A common theme among some parent guardian visitors was their difficulty in understanding and navigating school processes, such as the disciplinary process, special education services, and the transfer process. Several parent guardians reported feeling ineffective in advocating for their child because a clear explanation of these processes was not provided and/or explained by the school. The second systemic theme was the school-parent relationship. Parent guardian visitors expressed feeling their concerns were not adequately heard or addressed in a timely manner by administrators. Some parent guardians also noticed feeling uncomfortable addressing matters with administrators because of their perception that the administrator was not sufficiently engaged in the matter. The third systemic theme was English learner's needs. Parent guardian visitors believed if they do not specifically request interpreter services, then assumptions are made by staff that they fully understand the process. Some parent guardians expressed concerns regarding times when they consented to services and discovered the services were not consistent with what they understood them to be. They also felt their lack of understanding caused them to be left out. The fourth systemic theme for parent guardian and community visitors was engagement with the school board. A number of community members expressed concerns regarding their ability to comment during the citizen time period at the school board meetings. The community members perceive the process is not equitable when the same individuals are allowed to address the school board during these meetings. Next slide, please. A goal of the ombudsman's office is to help identify issues, manage conflict once it occurs, and prevent it whenever possible. Left unaddressed, conflict can have a devastating impact on an organization. Some of the results of unresolved conflict include strained relationships, stress, frustration, anxiety, loss of productivity, absenteeism, employee turnover, grievances, and litigation. While the ombudsman's office cannot provide formal recommendations, suggestions for reducing conflict and addressing systemic concerns are provided. For employees regarding the first systemic theme of work, climate, and culture. Although there is no single way to approach conflict, there are times when avoiding a conflict may create a more difficult workplace for everyone. One idea to promote a productive approach to conflict may be for administrators to consider how best to address problematic behaviors in a timely fashion. Doing so reduces or even eliminates the negative effect the behavior can have on morale. Administrators could also consider consulting with the ombudsman's office to discuss ways to approach workplace conflict. Administrators may also want to consider the benefits behind the decision, an employee's decision, to invite a silent witness to a meeting. For example, when an employee brings a silent witness, this enables the engaged parties the opportunity to focus on the communication process and not on documenting the meeting. Since some employees mentioned feeling stressed by their environment, employees could consult the Employee Assistant Program for additional resources. Regarding the second systemic theme of communication. How effectively an organization communicates is key to its overall success. However, when communication breaks down, it can often lead to conflict. Improving communication between administrators and employee benefits both parties as well as the organization's climate and morale. One way to improve communication may be for administrators to clearly state expectation to employees. When possible, checking back in with the other party for clarity ensures the communication was properly received. Keeping staff informed on relevant issues as much as possible could ensure gaps are not filled with inaccurate information. Administrators could help employees understand they are a part of a bigger picture by expressing the administrator's needs and tensions when asking questions or requesting information from the employee. Regarding the third systemic theme of performance evaluations. Feedback is essential for professional growth. While the giving and receiving of feedback can be challenging, it is a necessary aspect of a successful workplace. The performance process seeks to create a positive working environment where self-reflection and professional growth are desired by all. When it comes to areas of growth and/or the PIP process, employees could ask clarifying questions of their administrator to gain a better understanding on how to achieve this growth. At the same time, administrators could work with the employee continuously to provide this support. Finally, for employee visitors regarding the fourth systemic concern of policy and regulations. When new policy regulations are enacted, the policyholder could confirm the policy regulation is being applied as it was intended. Following up in this manner may well lead to organizational coherence. Next slide, please. For parent guardian and community visitors regarding the first systemic theme of navigating PWCS's processes effectively. Schools could ensure the parent's guardians are provided with instructions, handouts regarding the process, and given detailed information on what to expect throughout. Doing so could help to eliminate any misunderstandings and/or miss opportunities. Regarding the second theme of the school-parent relationship. A successful relationship between the school and the parent's guardians is a valuable one. Addressing concerns in a timely manner can help minimize any conflict between parties. To ease parent guardians' apprehensions regarding not being heard, administrators could follow up to ensure the issue was resolved. Regarding the third systemic theme of English learner's needs. Assumptions are often made unconsciously. However, incorrect assumptions can contribute to a situation not being properly addressed. While there may be a reason why parents and guardians do not request an interpreter, ensuring they are aware of the translation services available within PWCS at the onset may help mitigate misunderstandings. And finally, for parent guardian and community visitors regarding the fourth systemic theme of engagement with the school board. When people perceive situations differently, conflict can result. While a first-come, first-served process for requesting to speak at the school board meeting may be fair, the perception of some community members is that it is not. Therefore, the school board could address this concern with an evaluation of the signup selection process. More detailed information about the data included in this report can be found on the ombudsman's website. Next slide, please. The ombudsman's office is located in the Independent Hill complex. Visitors are seen by appointment only, either in person, via Zoom, or over the phone. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve as PWCS's ombudsman, and I look forward to your continued support. I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. We'll take questions. Ms. Williams?
Hi, good evening. Thank you and welcome because you're new to our school division as ombudsman. This is your first year and I believe your first presentation in front of us, so I just wanted to welcome you. I have some concerns with the classification of some of these being systemic issues when it's only been a year, as well as some of the recommendations are things that we already have implemented in place. So I don't want to give the public the idea that we don't do some of the things that you're recommending because we do do them already and have been doing them. So I just want to make sure the public is clear that, for example, offering translation services, right? That we do that regularly and we're also about to roll out a new program for families regarding translation services for every family in the school division, as well as the fact of things like timing. I think for me, the missing connection is the emphasis on individual perception because that's generally where we run into problems as human beings, right? I could consider 24 hours response time, timely, someone else could consider that, not timely. And I think it's important to recognize the individual nuances in these things and that a lot of this is perception-oriented. And I'm not saying that to lessen anything that you've said or to negate the problems that people gave to you to seek assistance for. Because I think for those who don't know, I was very integral in standing up the ombudsman office. So I'm a huge fan, having a background in conflict resolution and mediation, sort of near to my heart. But I just don't want, I want to be careful about our public perception and understanding and because it was only a year. In prior ombudsman presentations, we sort of looked at trends over a longer period of time, and they were broke down a little bit differently. So I think this is a new look for our board and may, in the future, need a little bit of tweaking so that we are putting our best foot forward and acknowledging the things that we are doing as well as what has occurred and what people, individuals came to your office to report to you so that we could be aware and take action on them. And I would be very interested to see what's already occurred in our first quarter of the school year and how that differs from last year's report, mostly because some of our circumstances and needs where our community have changed and again, because of some of the programs, things that we've rolled out as a school division to sort of address some of those issues presented. I think it's important that we continue to advertise your office and make folks aware of its existence. A lot of times we do hear staff feeling quite frustrated, not sure where to go. And we are going to continue to have some cultural disruptions as we change our school culture. And we have new faces, new branding, new policies, and new services provided. So I just want to make sure that the public... So, I just want to make sure that the public is aware of that and that this was from last year's report because that was primarily our first year back in full-time. I do like some of your recommendations. I think one of the things that I wish we still did, even though as a parent is, I didn't necessarily enjoy, which was having to sign a Code of Behavior card that came directly, almost stapled to our Code of Behavior, because I think some of the issues that you presented to us as systemic issues are, the answers are found there, right? When we talk about discipline or how to interact with school personnel. But I do know that it's one of the most overlooked documents. I think one of the best things we did this year was revise it, make it a little more user-friendly and more detailed and easier to comprehend. We don't talk a lot about that, but when it comes to issues of student discipline and how to interact with our school division staff and what services are available, a lot of that information is there. But I know that's a challenge for our school division this large to communicate, to ensure, I guess I should say, that we have limited ability to ensure that it is read and comprehend because we're in a digital format now. It's not stapled to a card, to a packet back like it was in the olden days, I should say, when I was a Prince William County student. But I do appreciate the time and the effort that you're putting forth. I also do appreciate your willingness to provide conflict resolution tools to our staff. One of the things I didn't hear you talk a little bit about would be maybe mediation in schools, providing mediation programs for our administrators and our employees so that they can interact. I heard you mention having a silent witness there. Sometimes it's helpful, sometimes mediation also is a very good tool in that for problem-solving and to avoid conflict or when conflict does arise. I know that we're doing some professional development with regards to conflict resolution too, and I appreciate that and I appreciate your leadership on that. And I'm excited to hear more about that program as you roll it out because, again, we can all speak English, but sometimes we don't all speak the same English, and that's generally where most of our conflicts arise. So, I just wanted to thank you for all of your hard work. I look forward to having these quarterly updates, and I look forward to seeing the type of change as some of these new programs and tools are rolled out to our school division employees and to the families and community at large and their impact as it comes, as it pertains to people visiting your office. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Ms. Jesse?
Mrs. Williams and I were instrumental, or along with Mr. Trent, I think, in creating this office. I will say this, that you can only report what comes to you. And when you say, when you use the word systemic, it sounds deadly, but I don't think you meant it in that way. But you did look at patterns, and you are new, but so is the superintendent. So, you're both new. So, I think some of these items on here were previously noted and are consistent with what we've seen in the past. And I think it's consistent with what you would see in other school systems also. We have, we need to create opportunities for people to feel comfortable. So, I want to make sure that when we say that we're, I know that Mrs. Williams didn't mean that we're already doing that because sometimes that can, yeah, because sometimes I think that when we say that, if it's been misinterpreted, then people coming to your offices are going to feel like, well, they're already doing it. So, why should we bother to come to your office? And I know her, and I know that's not what she meant. I want to make sure we clarified that. On the English learner's situation with the parents, I can understand that because my experience, I've worked in those areas where they don't speak English well, and they're embarrassed and they don't ask for help. So, as a principal or whoever, the leader in that building, they need to ask, do you need an interpreter? And I will tell one short story to give you an example. The assistant principal of my school handled all special ed. So, the assistant principal was out and asked me to come in, and I came in, and there was a parent, they said, this parent has been not, she would not come to school at all, would not respond to their recommendations for placement for the student. And so, I walked into the room, and the mother was sitting over by the window sill. And I don't know if you've seen those little ladies with the purse in their purse, and she had a purse in her lap, and she was by the window, and I thought, this is going to be a long meeting. And I had someone there who spoke Spanish, and he started to speak, and she changed her stance, and she moved to the table. And I heard her use the word loco, and I said to Andy, who was in charge, I said, what is she trying to say? And she said, I didn't sign it because I thought you were saying that my child was crazy, that he was loco. And now that I understand that he has a learning problem, I'm willing to sign the paperwork. So, that was, and I learned something from that. And I also learned with my PTA meetings, at the beginning of my PTA meetings, I had lots of parents who didn't speak English there. But then, as the meetings extended longer, that that representation did not reappear. And I kind of looked at it as something that was on my end. I'm now on the Policy Council for English as Second, not just English, Head Start, and they have more interpreters and we have more parents coming in. So, I think that is a legitimate concern. And I think people feeling retaliation, I think that's always going to be in existence, but I think it was here before Dr. McDade came. But I think she's working on those issues. The last Ombudsman had a category, and I don't know what the category, there was a category, I don't know if other people remember, there were so many people felt they were being discriminated against. And did you get that, or is that just a category that did not come into play when you did your report?
That is, Ms. Jesse, a subcategory, and it was not something that I could denote that was of significance. It doesn't mean, I highlighted for you the main category and then the two highest-level subcategories. So, that might have been maybe the third or the fourth within that. That falls under, I'm sorry, I can just tell you real quick, that will fall under the legal regulatory and financial and compliance category. That's number five. That's where that would fall. So, for that one, it just may not have been something of significance since I've been here.
I think that maybe there's going to be some tweaking, and as we listen to your presentations, there may be some tweaking. But I want to say to you that I think this was a well-presented report. I thought it was very comprehensive, and it just tells us what people are telling you. And the only thing you can report to us is what people say to you. You can't draw a conclusion from a small sampling of people, but your job is to report to us what I call the good, the bad, and the ugly. Sometimes it's not as pretty as we'd like, but I want to thank you for the report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, you want to clarify?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I did mean what I said, but because we are doing new programs and this is last year's report, so I don't want to, I want to make sure that the public understands that this data was from last year and about a very small percentage, I think 109 employees or somewhere around there, 100-some employees versus our 16,000. Doesn't mean any of their issues are not important. They absolutely are for taking time to come see you. But I do also want to make the public aware that in the 2022, 2023 school year, we have implemented some program to address some of these issues so that there's a clear understanding of where we were, where we are, and then, of course, where we are going. So, I don't want to minimize any of that or have any misinterpretation. Thanks.
Is there any further questions? Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and thank you to our Ombudsman for your presentation. I wish to also welcome you because it's the first time you've come before our board.
Thank you.
So, that's exciting. And I do believe that your office provides a valuable service to our division. And I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on the statistics. I was thinking about it, you know, we had, you said, 109 employee visitors, and we have, I think, over 12, I think we have about 12,000, how many? 16,000 employees. So, that's pretty, that's a pretty, actually, pretty small group. I mean, it's important to have a lens and who's coming and what they're saying, but overall, it's a really small group, which I think in and of itself is saying something that we have, that we have that small of a percentage that are actually taking advantage of your services. But I do appreciate every time, you know, every person that you meet with. And also, if I was thinking about the employee, the parent engagement, we have 90,000 students, each, assuming each student has one, let's say, a minimum of one parent. We had, you know, I think, what was the number, 72 or 75? So, it's actually a really small number, which in a way is a message to me that we're doing a lot of things right. But that if we do have individuals who, on an individual basis, have something that they want to talk about in confidentiality, that it is an important service that you provide, but that we don't necessarily draw like really hard and fast conclusions from our small sample size.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, so, but I wanted to ask you, since you're new to us, what is it, first of all, what is it you like best about your job and working for us as an Ombudsman in Prince William County? And what is, what do you feel is your office's greatest value to our organization?
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to answer questions such as that. So, being here for the last 10 months, it has been quite the learning curve for myself. I have been an Ombudsman prior to coming here, so this is my 13th year as an Ombudsman. The challenge here in learning an entirely new culture has been fascinating for me, and I have absolutely enjoyed every aspect of that. Coming from the federal government, that's a different kind of beast, and understanding that I knew when I came here that it would be a great opportunity to not just help the workforce, which is what I had done in the past, but also to help the parents and the community that comes to me. So, I feel like that has been a wonderful aspect of taking this job. I will say, people are people, and issues are issues, and concerns are the same, you know, kind of across the board. It usually revolves around how we communicate with one another, and that makes it challenging for folks. I will say, because it's been noted specifically in regard to the size of the amount of people who have come to the office, as a sole practitioner office, the number that have utilized the services is not surprising to me because a lot of people, for a variety of reasons, don't necessarily come to an Ombudsman's Office, one of which they may not know about it. So, that's part in how you have to advertise and outreach for the office. Others may feel that when I do say I'm confidential, they may not feel comfortable in that and may not want to come because of that reason. There's also other reasons because they feel like their voice won't be heard, they don't know, you know, if anything will come of it. So, there's many reasons why. So, statistically, the numbers for sole practitioner office are not, if you speak to the IOA, which is the governing body kind of of Ombudsman, they're not surprised in that type of number. So, I was not, in my first year, surprised by that, but certainly, you know, those who have utilized the office sometimes are coming because of what they feel, but also what they feel with the rest of the people around them. So, that's, they're brave enough to come and talk to someone about it, and so providing that service for them is what I would say would be my value that I've seen so far. I have had opportunities where I've had, not mediations, because I view mediations as formalized processes, but I've had facilitated conversations between individuals. And when people walk away from that and saying, I never realized that you had that perspective, and I didn't think about it in that light. If I helped that, then I've done my job very well, and that makes me very satisfied. People have said they feel like they've gotten a safe space to talk things through. I provide them, I tell people, I'm like your GPS. I'm just there to navigate it, you drive it. I'm just trying to help you navigate through it. So, that's where I do find my value and where I find joy in the job.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for answering those questions for me and for the benefit of our parent and teacher community who are listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Ross, then? Okay. Thank you for the presentation tonight and for the questions from the board members. I just want to say, I saw your poster at one of the schools of English and Spanish.
Wonderful.
So, I appreciate the advertisement. I know that many of the topics you discussed tonight are specifically addressed in our strategic plan and that all staff members work hard to be reflective and implement best research practices. And I just, I appreciate the discussion points from tonight and where we move from here. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 1702, revisions to policy 795 parental access to information and notice for certain materials. This policy update was requested by Ms. Wall and Mr. Wark. So, we can have one of you discuss the proposed revisions and then a discussion, and then we can, Ms. Williams can read the resolution. It's only on for information today. So, Ms. Wall or Mr. Wark, would you like to start?
Thank you. Yeah, good. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Good evening. I first want to take a few moments to dispel any rumors or misunderstandings that may have occurred since this policy recommendation change was posted. What is the intent versus what is not the intent of this? I know there's kind of some misunderstanding, and, you know, and again, this could go back. Obviously, this is a first reading, and the goal is to get feedback on this to potentially, you know, not make it as broad as it might appear, to shore some things up. So, first, I do want to say that this was not created in a silo, a situation where multiple individuals are working on the same objective but not communicating with one another. Ms. Wall and I vetted the language through the superintendent's office, the division attorney, the office of communications. The result is the currently proposed language from those reviews. The conclusion ultimately was that all building leaders should be already doing these types of best practices. Personally, I am not aware of any administrator in the school division who does not already follow this practice. Between weekly newsletters, smores, or other vendor products, calendar postings, website updates, it is clear that the vast majority of building-level leaders are conducting this best practice. I think the last thing principals want to do is not engage in communication with their families. The proposed policy change only pertains to building-wide events where all students within the building will be part of the presentation, et cetera. Since our teachers are already following VDOE pacing guides and the standards of learning, this does not pertain to grade-level team events, student-led events, or in individual classrooms. Again, this is building-wide events, the entire building exposed or being presented something of a nature, not teams, not grade levels, building-wide. The goal of this policy change is to put practice into formal policy. Parents should not have to rely on having an extremely communicative principal or assistant principals at their child's building. The proposed policy change formalizes best practice for organizational coherence. I would like to now discuss the alignment with this proposed change with two of our PWCS strategic plan commitments. First, organizational coherence. Objective 4.2 states that Prince William County schools will remove barriers to communication to facilitate collaboration across offices, schools, and families in the spirit of customer In my opinion, parents should not be cut off guard, or best practices should not vary between individual school buildings. If we know that the effective communication is currently occurring, we should align the practice in policy with the strategic plan. Objective 4.4 states Prince William County schools will work towards convergence, operating as a unified school system with shared accountability for school and division goals. The goal of formalizing this best practice in the policy is to protect our division and/or individual buildings by developing an organizational design to be 100% optimized and aligned to facilitate the effective delivery of instruction and operational support. and aligned to facilitate the effective delivery of instruction and operational support. Finally, under 4.4 of our strategic plan, it states, quote, "PwCs commits to developing renewed standards for site-based management," end quote. Again, my belief is that the proposed policy formalizes best practices across the entire division, and not something that can vary depending on the site where students attend. This policy adoption also aligns with our division goal of family engagement, which represents our school division's commitment to building collaborative, meaningful partnerships, and trusting relationships to foster the success of all students. PWCS, it says, will ensure honest, transparent, and two-way communication with families, schools, and the community to foster trusting relationships. Ms. Wall will add additional context behind the proposed policy.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and thank you, Mr. Wilk. I, I thought that was a really great explanation for some of the thinking behind what we are trying to do here. You know, as board members, one of our, one of our key responsibilities is to enact policy and to engage in governance. And in particular, policy and governance are at the heart of our functions and our roles. And as Mr. Wilk said, you know, we have our four key commitments, and this aligns with two of them in particular, the family and community engagement, commitment and the organizational coherence. It formalizes in policy what we do in practice. And for that reason, I believe our policies should reflect what we're doing. They should be an accurate reflection of what we ask our administrators to do, our teachers to do, our students, parents, and everybody else. So according to the plain language of, as Mr. Wilk addressed, it is meant to address school-wide events, not teacher, individual teacher or classroom activities, grade-level activities, student-led activities. It's, but school-wide events where children of multiple ages and circumstances are addressed. And so hence the language, "school-wide presentation, including guest presentation, assembly, or book or other material content that's read, shared, performed, or broadcast." You know, typically, things that are outside the curriculum. We're not noticing every aspect of curriculum that we are going to be doing. That's already covered. So it is in the promotion of family engagement that parents receive notice of events and other large-scale participation kinds of items. I know as a parent, I've been in situations where, in both kinds of situations where I had notice of an event coming up and I appreciated it, and I was able to inquire and be prepared for it, maybe even show up or prepare my child for what was the event or activity. And there were also, have also been instances where I wasn't prepared, because I have two graduates of Prince William County education who started as kindergartners and went all the way up through 12th grade, and I have a 12th grader now. So I've had cumulatively quite a lot of years of consuming Prince William County education. And so I can say from experience, when a child comes home from school and starts talking about something, and you don't know where that's coming from, and it, it could even be something a little bit concerning, like maybe trafficking, or, you know, maybe some discord, or something like that, and you're, you're wondering why your sixth grader's asking you about these topics, it's, it's, it's best practice to let parents know, hey, we're having a school-wide presentation on, you know, gangs or anti-trafficking, or social media use, or whatever it is, so that you, as a parent, are aware and can have those conversations with your child. And so I think in, in doing that, we really invite parents to be partners with us, and we help parents collaborate, not only with the school, but also with the child, and have the conversations that parents need to have. So I also like the provision in here where the notice includes the date, time, and location, the title and a brief description, and the name of a person to contact, especially the name of the person to contact, because sometimes you might have questions. Like, what is good touch, bad touch? Parents of kindergarten, or young elementary school kids will know what I'm talking about. That's, you know, a program, I guess, and I, you, you might want to know, like, what is that, and who can I talk to about that, to find out more about that? And that's useful, and that facilitates communication, and it invites parents into our learning environment. And I think that's appropriate, and it establishes that customer service connection that we are striving to achieve in Prince William County schools, and I think it will lead to good results. My last point is just reiterating what Mr. Wilk said, that many, if not most, of our schools are already doing this, and in checking with division leadership and division council. This is something that we have already done, and I look forward to additional comments. If citizens have comments, or if citizens have feedback, they want to send an email or let us know through other means, or if board members have other questions, we're, we're happy to engage in that dialogue.
Ms. Tucker?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I, I'll just, I'll just add to this conversation. Yes, the intent was to keep communication clear. As somebody who has orchestrated a, a school-wide event, I, I, not coming up with stuff last minute, so a parent could ask if they had wanted to, like a winter concert or something like that, I would already know what we're doing. I also think it's a, a good idea to have that point of contact, because I can say, as a teacher, if another entity, say the Marine Band is coming in to do a concert, I can't answer those questions, but they have an office that could. So it, it is hopefully going to take some pressure off of teachers and administrators as well, if there's a guest coming in. So that is another thought for, for why something like this could be useful. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. First, I just want to make sure the public is clear that this is an existing policy that we've had since 2004, and that it is just being updated. And really, the, the majority of this updating is sort of to correspond with our regulations. And for those who don't know, regulations in the school division are actionable items on how to enforce the policy. So I don't want anybody to be confused and think that this is just something brand-new. As I've mentioned several times, I was a Prince William County school student, and I have been a Prince William County school parent for going on, well, a little over 12 years. So I, I think that the majority of this is already being done, because it's in our regulations. So this is not new information for most of us. I think codifying a policy to some respect to match the regulation is a little bit backwards from our normal procedures, but I do understand that there are certain parents out there who appreciate the update to the policy. I am concerned that nowhere in this policy, either in the update or the one in 2004, which probably wasn't as big of a deal back then, but there's no notice in here for guardians. Everyone doesn't have parents, despite popular belief. There are plenty of students who participate in our school division who do not have parents and, available to a system, but legal guardians. So if we're going to do any updating, I'd like to be modern in our updating and recognize that there are students that don't come to us with parents, just legal guardians, if we're going to be validating everyone in our school division and dotting our i's and crossing our t's. I do have concern about, a little bit more about the name and person in contact for information. And I'm also a little concerned that there are caretakers in our school division that aren't receiving this information, because it's a regulation, and because my experience as a parent has been pretty much everything is posted in Canvas, and is widely accessible, and as well as, you know, newsletters that go out, all types of field trips, or specialty assemblies or presentations, there's usually a permission slip so that students can attend. So I just want to make sure that we're not overburdening our current staff, and that we're not duplicating work. So I think that that's something that we, as a board, should look into. I do believe that this policy needs updating, but I just want to make sure that we're not duplicating work or actions that are already required of our division staff. And I also want to know a little bit more about, maybe we can, I can discuss with legal offline, because this is not an appropriate format, what this, exactly what this means for giving notice to, because I think that's very broad as well. And the, the regulations of parents or guardians are concerned. They're also found in, in board docs. There's a matching regulation that goes into far greater detail about how we actually have been current implementing this policy, which, again, like I said, has been around since 2004, under our school board policies and regulations. But I know this has been a common practice, at least since when I was a student in school. So I just want to be careful, if we're going to update again, that we add the words guardians if possible. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms., Madam Chair? I just want to clarify something, because I think Ms. Williams brings up a good point, because it's a little hard when you look at, at the policy red line that is available on board docs with the agenda item. It all appears in red line, but, and it, but it's not all new. So, so the only reason that, that section one appears that way is because, because we were adding a second part of the policy, that we put in Roman numerals. And so the, the first section under the Protection of People Rights Amendment is entirely the same as it was before. And it, it is hard when you look at it, it looks like it's all new, but I just want to make that clarification, that the, the first part under subsection one, or Roman numeral one, is in fact identical. We didn't change anything in that part. And so because of that, we didn't put, I didn't, I didn't add guardians in, but you make a good point that we could update that, to say that. But all the new policy proposed by Mr. Wilk and Ms. Wall is found in section two of the policy. So just, if you're looking at that offline, it's just, so I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because it looks like most of it is like an update from the, what's currently our regulations. So thank you.
Mrs. Jesse?
Hi. I just want to put my parent hat on, and I wondered if maybe the three-day, why, why not five days? I, I guess that's my question. I was a parent, and I heard my, my daughter singing a song in the back of the car, and I remember the exact place where it was, and I said, "What's happening?" I said, "What song?" She said, "We're having a play." I said, "When?" "Tomorrow night." And I thought, okay, so I called the school immediately, and she said, "Oh, the secretary, I talked to the wrong person." She said, "Just put on her Sunday best." So I bought a beautiful white dress. I get to the play, and everybody's wearing cowboy outfits. And this lady sitting next to me said, "Who is that little girl with the white dress? She must have a lead role." I said, "I don't know that little girl." But my point is that I, I think most parents would need a, I, I, is it, is that, was that a part of the, the original regulation, which?
Thirty days in the regulation.
Thirty days. I think at least five days. I, I don't know. I, I just think that I would need more than three days to be notified that I, because I have to get babysitters and all these things, and I'm just thinking about parents, you know, is that possible? Is that something that, which you could consider? Maybe five days? That would give me time to, to really realize she should wear a cowboy outfit?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's all open to discussion. I don't think there's a hard line on three days. Yeah. I, I also want to point out, just for point of order, that a previous speaker asked about duplication of work. This was vetted by the Office of Communications, who took it to, I believe, the principals and not to speak for them. So I would encourage other board members to ask them about that type of workload or duplication, because it did go through them. This is, we're having a little confusion with that statement.
So, so the, so the regulation?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, nothing, nothing in the regulation changed, and, and has, so there's no part of the regulation that's currently attached to this policy is pertinent to the new language in section two. So it all relates to section one, which has been around for, as you note, a long time. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear, there's nothing, nothing in the regulation as it exists now addresses the new portion of the policy.
So I, I just want to jump in really quickly, I'm sorry. So the regulations generally are updated when we update policies, or they follow and comply with policies? So that was my comment, to make sure that we weren't doing anything duplicate, was pertaining to the regulation and the policy that vein, because I don't, the, if we pass this, then the regulation will be updated to reflect the new policy. So they're not standalone items, necessarily. They're usually sort of, we do a policy, the regulation is how we implement the policy that we pass. So there would be updated, need, updates needed, and I was just concerned, because we added a portion to the policy, which is already in the regulation, just speaks to different times, it speaks to different things. So that's why, that's where my, I don't want to duplicate things that we're already doing part of it. I, I just want, there's that concern from our staff, that we're adding more workload, we're doing things. I'm not in a building day-to-day, but there is a very extensive regulation where we do do most of the stuff. So I wanted to make sure, as board members, that we are aware that this is there, and that we're not causing further hardship, and that some of these things are already in practice. So that, that was where I, the, the duplicate work comment came from, just so that we're all on the same page. Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Ross, do you have any comments?
No, not this time, thank you.
Okay, since the board spoke specifically to the proposed language changes and additions and to the existing policy, I would encourage the public to go to board docs and read the red line justification form. And since there was a, a lot of discussion about, you know, changes, Mr. Anderson, would you mind speaking to next steps between now and like when the policy, will we put online for people to see, when we're voting on this, just quickly, and then we'll move on?
Yes, Ms. Jackson. The next steps will be to take the feedback that we've heard tonight from, and that has come in by email from citizens. The sponsoring board members certainly, I think, would be consulted to about any changes we want to make in light of that feedback. I think the intent would be to bring this back as a second read, which is our usual practice on the 15th. So there would be an update between now and the next time that the agenda's posted, and some of the language may change. And I'm going to take Ms. Williams's good suggestion and go back and add guardians to the section one that has been around since 2006. I think that's a good idea. So, so there will be a red line posted that shows changes between tonight and the, the new version, so that the public will easily be able to see what modifications have been made.
I'm sorry. Would you consider the five days also, instead of three?
I'll defer to, to Ms. Wall and Mr. Wilk on the three versus five days. That's a, that was what I think was agreed on.
I just think parents need a little bit more time.
Three seemed like a good mix between principals, usually administrator, administrators needing to know kind of, okay, what's coming up, and how long to give parents notice, and, you know, but we, I mean, we can, we can have that discussion.
Could you just consider it? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to agenda 17.03, prevailing wage resolution. This is also on for information, and this resolution is new. So Ms. Williams, would you mind reading it before we have our discussion? Thank you.
Sure. So this resolution, prevailing wage, excuse me, prevailing wage resolution was introduced by Dr. Latif. This is something I believe that the board received an update on, was it pre-COVID? Does anyone? It was June? Was it June? Sorry, my timeline, sometimes it's messed up, because of COVID and everything else going on. So this is a discussion that was had in June by the board. The resolution on board docs currently reads, "Resolution of the Prince William County School Board adopting the payment of prevailing wage for the work performed on public works contracts as authorized by section 2.2-4321.3C of the Code of Virginia. Whereas in 2020, the General Assembly amended the code section 2.2-4321.3 to authorize localities to adopt an ordinance, requiring that when letting contracts for public works paid in whole or in part by funds of the locality, or when overseeing or administering a public contract, its bid specification, project agreements, or other public contracts applicable to the public works shall require bidders, offers, contractors, and subcontractors to pay wages, salaries, benefits, and other remunerated, and, and other remuneration to any mechanic, laborer, or worker employed, retained, or otherwise hired, perform services in connection with the public contract at the prevailing wage rate. And whereas Prince William County School Board oversees and directs the mission and operations of the Prince William County schools through the development and adoption of policies and resolutions, now therefore be resolved that effective January 1, 2023, the Prince William County School Board hereby adopts, hereby requires the payment of prevailing wage work for performed, excuse me, prevailing wages for work performed on contracts for public works as that term is defined in Virginia Code 2.2-4321.3. Be it further resolved that the requirement of this resolution do not apply to contracts for public work projects, one valued at for public work projects, one, valued at less than $250,000; two, already subject to federal prevailing wage laws; three, awarded to a successful bidder in response to a request for proposal, invitation for bid, or other solicitation issued by the school board prior to the effective date of this resolution, including any renewals; or, four, exempt or excluded from the Virginia Public Procurement Act. Be it further resolved that the division superintendent is authorized to modify or establish any regulations or departmental procedures necessary to administer this resolution and then adopted and approved."
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Thank you, everyone. So this is very exciting that we are taking the steps to include prevailing wages in our future construction contracts. I've always considered myself a champion for career and tech education, growing up in the wonderful state of Michigan where CTE is attached to almost every school district in the state. I am proud of the direction that we're going as our division. Dr. McDade's commitment to making college and career readiness start as early as in our elementary programs because it starts there, to re-instituting and revamping some of our middle school programs for exposure and partnerships. I think this is great. When I first came on the board, one of my first projects and commitments was trying to finalize that partnership with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers out at Unity Reed High School and making that program and build a partnership with those, the school and that union. But it's important that we recognize that we can do more to set our kids up for success. We can ensure that new schools we build offer opportunities for good wages, benefits, apprenticeships, and actually workforce development within our county. We are a commuter county, but this is a great opportunity to bring our kids and bring jobs, high-paying jobs, to our students and our graduates. A prevailing wage policy will make sure that the contractors who build our projects pay Prince William County residents what they are worth. That's good for the taxpayer because we're getting a better end project. It's good for the workers who live and work here. And it's good for the local contractors who are no longer underbid by out-of-town competition. And it's good for our students who can see an alternative pathway to college right in front of their eyes. We need to continue moving beyond the myth that all students need to go to college. What better opportunity showing action beyond words than providing our CTE students and our graduates with high-paying jobs within Prince William County? I also looked into what prevailing wage rates were for Prince William County. Prevailing wages differ from minimum wages in that they are a reflection of the market rate for a construction worker in a particular construction craft. So for example, a carpenter making prevailing wage will make $31.40 an hour plus about $13.86 in benefits. An iron worker, which we all know, I've seen the reports that we need more of these, would make $34.85 an hour plus $24.84 in benefits, and so on, and so on. These are wages that don't break the bank, but they allow someone working on one of our projects to actually be able to afford and live and work here. As far as the question of need, yes, I believe we need this resolution. What I want to try and avoid with our contracting is a race to the bottom. Even if many of our contractors are already paying prevailing wages, it is important that we set a wage floor so that an out-of-town contractor can't come to our county and underbid our local contractor based by cutting their wage bill. By setting a prevailing wage rate, we are maintaining a competitiveness, competitive business environment for our contractors while doing right by our workers. I do want to thank the groups who have written to support us in this ordinance. The D.C. Metro Building Trades, which is an organization representing seven construction unions in Northern Virginia, has communicated to our board their support for this measure. I look forward to continuing to work with our trade unions to provide viable pathways for our students and graduates to get good, middle-class jobs and live where they work right here in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Zargarpur?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Wilk, that was amazing. I'm going to add just a couple of things. I've had an opportunity to talk with some of the trades about this, kind of adjunctly because I'd had some students who were looking for apprenticeships, internships, things like that, and especially in their senior year of high school. There was an issue with some students at one of my schools being able to complete a program. And I worked with some of the trades to help them, help these students find some opportunities for them. So I know that they're working hard for our students and I just want to thank them for helping me understand a little bit better about what prevailing wage will do. Mr. Wilk just explained it very well. And I just, thank you, thank you so much.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. And I actually have some questions that I would like to ask. So my first question is, can you please explain to me how we determine a prevailing wage?
Yeah, prevailing wage, well, first off, good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. McDade. The prevailing wage, those wages are set and established by the Virginia Department of Labor and Industry.
Okay.
Actually, I just want to clarify that. They're actually set by the U.S. Department of Labor and then, but they are obtained from the Virginia Department of Labor.
Okay. So set by U.S. Department of Labor and then Virginia Department of Labor. Okay, so we can know that number? Like, we can know those?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it per industry or per trade?
It's by trade.
And are we, is this going to affect every contract or is this for our, like, construction contracts, like our CIP type?
Right. This would impact any contract over $250,000. And that floor is set by the Prevailing Wage Act, a minimum of $250,000, or the floor is $250,000.
Okay. Wait, when you say that, so my next question was going to be, why the $250,000 threshold? You're saying that's set by?
I think Wade's going to chime in here.
Ms. Wall, the prevailing wage act that was passed two years ago that authorized localities and school divisions to implement a prevailing wage set a $250,000 floor. In other words, you cannot, you are not allowed to require prevailing wage for any project less than $250,000. And so we've got that in there. The board can actually change that amount and make it whatever amount they'd like as long as it's either at $250,000 or above. You cannot, you're not authorized to do it below.
So we could set it at $500,000? We could set it at a million? Could we have some information on why that might be advantageous to raise it or why not? Like, who would that benefit? Would that benefit us? For instance, if we raised it to $500,000 or we raised it to a million?
Yeah.
And how would that benefit us?
Well, it, so the estimate that we provided, and obviously this was back in June, we looked at eight projects locally, four in Virginia and four in Maryland. And it's tough in Virginia because not a lot of school districts are providing prevailing wage or paying prevailing wage. So there was some variability there within the Virginia projects. Maryland was a little bit of a better example because there's more stability there and they've been doing this for some time. But we're estimating it'll be about a 10% to 20% cost increase within our construction projects.
Oh, across the board?
Yes, ma'am.
We would pay like 10% to 20% more for building a school or whatever.
Potentially. That's what we're estimating.
And that's using the $250,000 floor?
Correct.
And that is a state? That's the Virginia General Assembly, right? Just to be clear that everybody understands that.
Yes, ma'am. It was the General Assembly that passed the $250,000 floor.
And that was in 2020?
2020, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Can I ask a question about, so to me, this looks a little bit like it removes the, those contracts from the competitive bidding process on school construction process, projects. And I know now we do engage in a competitive bidding process. I've seen those reports and then, you know, we get the spreadsheet with the different bids that came in and it seems that we usually generally go with the lowest cost bid. So I guess my, is that correct?
That process would still remain in place, Ms. Wall. The difference here is if the board, you know, moves forward with providing prevailing wage, that that would be a part of those contracts.
We would still go with the lowest cost? Okay. And my last question is related to our bond rating. So as I understand it, we have a solid AAA bond rating, which is a point of pride for the school division and allows us to borrow at good rates. And that is looked upon favorably for us as a low risk in the bond market. So my question is, how would this affect our bond rating and our financial reputation? Would there be any effect? And if so, what kind of effect would it have?
So Prince William County Schools, or Prince William County, excuse me, is one of 47 nationwide triple AAA rated localities. It's something that both the county and us are very proud of. This, if the board chose to go forward with this prevailing wage requirement, it should have no impact on the county's AAA, triple AAA rating as long as we continue to meet our obligations just like we have in the past.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I don't have any further questions at this time. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Jesse?
I just wanted to support this resolution and to address what Mr. Wilk said about careers and college. I was one of these people who believed that everyone should go to college because I was the only one in my family to go to college. So when I was a principal, I created this K to kindergarten to college and we took our fifth graders to Virginia Tech for several years. And we were the first school to do that and I was very proud of that. And then I met Dove Wright and went to Potomac High School and met the welding class. And it changed me. It changed my thinking that there are kids who are hands-on kids and there were kids there who had left high school and came back to be in the welding class. And then I learned a lot more about welding and that the average age for retirement at this point is 55 years old and that they're looking for welders. And these kids made phenomenal pieces of art and I've learned a lot. And of course, at Potomac High School, they also have their culinary arts program. And I think we, and I talked to superintendent, I said, I want everybody to go to college. And she said, and have a career. She said, so we want both. And I'm very pleased to support this prevailing wage. I don't want to go into the intricacies of it, but I think that we need to think outside of the box. I think if every student could graduate from, if we had a goal that every student either went to college or had a career option when they left this school system, we wouldn't have the level of crime that we have because I think when people are employed and successful, you don't have that. And I don't have any stats on that, but it just makes sense to me. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Ms. Zargarpur? Okay. So I looked up the dollar threshold amount for contract coverage by state. And many states are like 2,000, 1,000, 2,500. So we're just even as a county above that. Also, when I had asked earlier, because it is concerning, are we going to be, is it going to cost more to build things or, you know, whatever we need? Just getting some information back about the SIP budgets in other counties that have adopted this have not had to increase their budgets. They haven't had any significant increases. Right now, we're in an inflationary period, so it's, you know, it's kind of a different thing altogether. But that was one of the things that I was very concerned about and there's no evidence right now. There was a report, I believe, about Montgomery County that turned out to not be accurate. So.
Is there any further, Ms. Wall?
I'm glad you actually brought that up, Ms. Zargarpur, because that is something we don't need to answer, staff doesn't need to answer this right now. But I am concerned about the effect of having to pay 10% to 20% more for our contracts across the board, considering, one, the volatility in the market that I know we've experienced. I mean, I remember the presentations that we got last year and the year before with the price of lumber, the price of steel, et cetera. And I know we even had to delay the beginning or the opening of Rose Mount Lewis Elementary School, partially because of COVID, but also because of the cost of insourcing the materials because some of those raw materials were so much more expensive. And I also am concerned because we are in an inflationary period, so we're already paying a lot more for things that we, that we need. Because we have students and we have to build schools and we need to not overcrowd our classrooms. So we got, we're kind of stuck. We have to do these things. It's not like we can just decide, you know, we don't need a new couch. You know, we can put off getting a new table for five years. Now, we need a new, if we need a new school, we need a new school. So, you know, those factors of volatility in the market with commodities and materials and the inflation and everything are driving our costs up anyway and creating a lot of volatility and unpredictability in our budgetary planning. And then we lay on top of this, the effect of having to pay 10% to 20% more for our contracts. I'm concerned about where in the budget would we take this from because it's money, I mean, yeah, I mean, where do you take it from? Because money doesn't grow on trees. So unless we, you know, I mean, I guess then we look to the board of county supervisors and they raise the tax rate on everybody because we need more money for schools, because we need to accommodate a bigger budget. Anyway, those are some of my concerns. So maybe, I don't know if that's something we can talk about next time, but I don't expect you to answer any of that tonight.
I was going to say, we probably can do some projections. That probably would be the best. We wouldn't have any hard and fast, concrete numbers. And then we could, to what Ms. Zargarpur stated, we can kind of look at other regions, others, divisions, and see those who've already implemented what their numbers look like.
Sorry. I do recall being told that out of a project, labor's about 20% of the cost. So if we're talking about inflationary costs, it's usually, I remember the price of steel back when we were talking about this earlier had skyrocketed and then it began to drop. So I know that's, that's part of the volatility, but I don't believe that the wages are necessarily a big chunk. It's like 20%.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Admittedly, this is not my subject matter of expertise. But what I will say is that I think our major problem with construction, in addition to when we had supply chain disruptions, was contractors finding employees. Because what we're not talking about in this conversation is the fact that young people don't work for the same wages that we work for. They can go on Instagram and make double what a lot of us make in an office, just doing what they do on social media. So I think this is reinforcement to our youth that we are graduating through all of these wonderful programs, that they will graduate and be paid a fair and living wage, which is the point. Because if we don't continue to encourage them to come through our system, be well-trained, and then we don't pay them when they get out, it won't make any difference because they won't be construction workers. You can drive on the way here, I think, for the past year and some change, there's contractor, construction worker jobs. I think now it's like $20 an hour, $40 an hour now for like lead manager. There's big billboards everywhere because they're just not simply getting paid enough money to justify the work that they're being asked to do. So I think this is a good thing for our school division to reinforce to the children that we're graduating, that we are committed to not only your education, but for paying you a living wage as much as we possibly can once you graduate. And hopefully you'll stay here or find employment within our county because that's continuously been a problem. So thanks.
Is there any further comments, questions? Okay. Based on the presentation that we heard in June 1, 2022, prevailing wage rate is defined in Virginia Public Procurement Act. The PPA is the rate amount or level of wages, salaries, benefits, and other remuneration prevailing for the corresponding classes of mechanics, laborers, or workers employed for the same work in the same trade or occupation and the locality in which the public facility or immovable property that is subject of public works is located. This item today is on for information and there is time for feedback. I appreciate all the discussion tonight and all the work the board has done to increase pay for employees. This draft resolution is consistent as right now, it appears consistent right now, with the work that we have done to take steps towards people being paid a fair and competitive wage. There is one point I would like to emphasize that other board members said that I'm just going to reemphasize, is that Prince William County's vision that every student will graduate on time with the knowledge, skills, and habits of mind necessary to create a thriving future for themselves and their community. We have committed to ensure our students have a plan after we graduate. And as such, we should build and continue to promote CTE and strengthen partnerships and support our students post-graduation as well. That includes fostering pay, competitive pay. I appreciate the input of constituents, employees, trades, laborers. I appreciate the input of constituents, employees, trades, labor on this issue. And I again appreciate the discussion. And I think we are anticipating to vote on this for the next meeting. Right, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, I am, okay. That brings us to seventeen oh four, which the motion has changed. So if we could please refresh our computers.
It should already be, it's on the bottom.
Madam Chair?
Madam Vice Chair? I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Victoria Colron Roland as the Napsco District Representative for a two-year term from eleven, November 2nd, 2022, to June 30th, 2024, to the Safe Schools Advisory Council.
Any discussion?
Ask second.
Any second? Ms. Jessie? Now, any discussion? Please vote, oh, Miss, no, okay. Please vote. Ms. Ralston?
Yes.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Chairman Latif, motion passed. All right. That brings us to seventeen oh five. Okay. Board matters. We now move on to board matters. This is our last meeting ended late, and board members agreed to waive their board matters time. With no objection from the board tonight, we would like to extend board matters to four minutes each person. Are there any objections? All right, thank you. If you don't mind, Mrs. Jessie, would you mind starting tonight? I'm sorry, thank you.
First of all, I want to congratulate Woodbridge High School for winning their homecoming game. And I thought that the queen, you did the queen wave quite well in the parade. But it was really a very, the weather was great in the game. I didn't stay until the end. I thought they were going to lose, and I didn't stay because I thought they were going to lose. But it was very cold and we wanted to get home. And we got home and they won, and then we felt guilty. So let's get in the car and go back, but it was too late. But anyway, I want to congratulate them. As you know, I've been going on these, what I call the gratitude tour. And in the gratitude tour, I give this cup. And this cup started when I was a principal. Every Friday, I'd give a cup with music. And I didn't realize how much it meant to teachers. A single cup meant so much to them. So all of my schools now have what I call a cup of gratitude. And this year, I decided to give a cup to teachers. And I'm not going to share all of the cups I've given. But so far, I've given a cup to Rockledge, Lake Ridge Middle, Lake Ridge Elementary, Woodbridge High School, Springwood, Jenkins, and Carydale. I think we have Hocklequan, Westridge, and Marshall, and Tiedem still left. We need to set up those. But I just wanted to share a couple of photos, and I think we have them. This is, each person reacted, each school reacted differently. And this particular individual had, really Ridge Middle, and her name is Kimberly Ding. When we, I gave her the cup, and it was a drawing. And she said, well, since you said this cup, that this cup could be shared by all of us, I would like to share my, please go back to that slide, please. Slide one, that my cup with everyone. So she plans to put her cup in the faculty room, and we took a group picture. The second person to receive the cup that I have a photo is a first-year kindergarten teacher. Her name is Andrea Bortner. And you'd think I'd given her five thousand dollars. You know, when I gave the doughnuts, I said, you guys are hugging me for a doughnut. And I just think that teachers do need this recognition. And some of the things I heard tonight, I know they're doing wonderful things. And my final photo tonight is of this man. When you go to Woodbridge High School as a board member, Mr. Walker, or she always has someone meet you at the, meet you in your car. And he's sometimes is a student, but often is Mr. Walker. And if I'm late or if I come to, it was raining one day, and he was standing there with that umbrella. I just wanted to give him a cup of gratitude, and he is their behavioral specialist, I think, in that building. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Walker for everything you do. I do not know his first name because I called him Mr. Walker, because that's who he is. And so that's all I have to share tonight because I wanted to say to Dr. McDade and to everyone that the teachers are stressed. And since you've been here, you've done a wonderful job. But it's something that we need to continue and some way to recognize teachers and the gifts and talents that they bring. And it was not just the teachers, it was everyone in the building. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I just want to start off by talking about something that was brought up this evening, but also nationwide, which was the NAEP test scores. I want parents and guardians and the public just to understand that that test score is reflection of the rigor of standardized testing in Virginia. And it is not an apples-to-apples comparison to test scores across the country. It is not something that measures learning of students. That is done on other tests. This test score is reflective of the rigor of standardized testing in the state of Virginia. And that was changed under multiple administrations. So both parties had a hand in changing those test rigors for math. One was by math, one was done math. I think it was McDonald's. And then reading may have been Northam and McCullough. So I always pick at these things, like I pick at the NITCH report and I pick at some of the other things because there's a lot of misunderstanding. People hear a headline and don't always understand all of the nuances and the details that go on behind that. Virginia is still at the top of the heap for student learning. We are in the top four for fourth grade math and reading and eighth grade math, around average for eighth grade reading. So I just want parents and guardians and the members of the public to go out there and do a little bit more digging when we see these headlines, because they can be confusing and sometimes detrimental to our own staff morale, especially in the state of Virginia with our teachers. It would be, if I didn't know, if I didn't know and I heard that, and I would go to my teachers and be like, well, what's going on? And they'd be telling me that this has nothing to do with what your student is learning. This has to do with the standard, the rigor in the standardized test that your student is taking. And that's a big deal and a big difference. Want to also, moving on from that, I want to talk a little bit about the fact that the Race and Social Justice Commission met. It is something that the school board participates in partnership with. We did that last Thursday. It's every third Thursday of the month. And I sit on that. It was not really education-focused last month. Moving on from that, there were several events that I was able to participate in. I did a webinar with Children Healthy Family Focus on gun violence in schools, participating back-to-school nights at various elementary schools. I want to apologize to Kilby and Murumsco. I did intend to attend two of their events, but I had a family issue that came up, and I was not able to participate, but I will be there. I want to give a special shout out to our Virtual Learning Academy proximity, who we contract with, on their Proximity and Beyond series that they will be holding all year for virtual families to participate in with their students. And it's grades K through eight, because, again, the state has a virtual program. I was able to also attend a Regional Elected Leaders Fall Webinar, the Dumfries Mayor's Ball, where I got to participate in honoring a former school board member, Ms. Betty Covington, as well as congratulate the Teacher of the Year for Dumfries. Most importantly, two things, I want to congratulate everyone who had a hand in the family camp for Title I. I was there as a board member and as a parent. I'd like to give a special shout out to Mr. Edwards, who are sitting in our audience, for his YouTube video on school security and safety. My son, I took him with me. He is still talking about how cool that was. So he's extremely introverted, so that is just very meaningful to me as a parent. And I appreciate all the work that our security team has done to make our safety and security relatable to each age group. So kudos to you. And then on that note, I also want to make note that I was able to attend a school division and Charlotte Meckler to look at their version of, excuse me, metal detectors. And I'm going to end there because I'm out of time. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Tuesday, October 18th, saw the wrapping up of back-to-school nights at Sudley, Sinclair, Tyler, and Mullen Elementary Schools. It was a pleasure meeting so many parents and educators, and I'm confident we're off to a good start. Saturday, October 15th, I caught the end of the 50th Anniversary Celebration at Sudley Elementary. It was a great event with fun outdoor activities. And there were some returning teachers and principals and families and graduates. And schools have changed quite a bit over the years, so the building, there were building tours as well, which is fun for people. I attended on Wednesday, October 26th, Sinclair Elementary's Title I Family Night, which was really a lot of fun. The staff did a great job. I got to meet the teachers, play some fun math and reading games, and purchased some fun things at the book fair. I want to congratulate Battlefield Cross Country teams for their first-place win at districts. They have regionals tomorrow. Good luck, everybody. Cross country is a great sport. One of my, one of my daughters ran in cross country in high school. It's awesome. Battlefield held their amazing pink-out game last weekend, which was awesome. Tenance was electrifying. I'm looking forward to a good contest against Patriot this Friday. Always a good rivalry. I held office hours with Ms. Jackson on October 26th with the Brunsville District. We had some good one-on-one visits with parents and grandparent members of the community. So appreciate those people who came out. On Thursday, October 27th, I joined Ms. Zargarpur, Dr. McDade, and Chief of Staff Ms. Batalo at the 31st Annual Food Show at Colgan High School, which was really fun. And I admit, my eating habits are probably mostly like the kids. I love the cinnamon rolls and the dessert. Those are my favorites. And I'm, I'm a member of the School Health Advisory Board. And on Friday, the 28th, we met and we reviewed some really important topics. And I'm happy to hear that all of our schools are staffed with full-time nurses this year and that we also have over a dozen nurses working as clinical team leaders, which is a new role for PTOES this year to support our school clinics, which are very busy. I really appreciate all of those individuals who are working in that new capacity this year and providing a great service for our students. The board met on Saturday, the 29th, with superintendent to discuss goals and working agreement. And all of our efforts towards organizational coherence and a cohesive leadership team are done with one goal in mind, which is that of promoting and achieving higher student achievement and for all of our students. So I'm proud to be part of this team. To all of our seniors, keep at it. November 1st deadline has come and gone, but there are still applications to fill out and plans to make. Keep at it. This too shall pass. You shall pass. Take advantage of the counselors and resources that are available to you. I know it's stressful. I remember it very well and sometimes have nightmares about it still, this many years later. This has been a most beautiful fall. I love the beautiful trees. I know I've seen a lot of trees on social media, which is a nice change, actually. I like, we should keep posting about trees on social media, everybody. But it does remind me about the passage of time and even of mortality as winter draws near. And my thoughts turn to a poem that I love as a humanities, English major in college. So I want to close with this thought expressed by the poet Gerard Manley Hopkins, one of my favorites. It's called "Spring and Fall." "Margaret, are you grieving? Older golden grove unleaving leaves like the things of man you, with your fresh thoughts care for, can you? Ah, as the heart grows older, it will come to such sights colder. By and by nor spare a sigh, though worlds of wan wood leaf meal lie. And yet you will weep and know why. Now, no matter child the name, sorrow springs are the same. Nor mouth had, nor mind expressed, what heart heard of, ghost guessed. It is the blight man was born for. It is Margaret you mourn for." Beautiful poem. We could analyze this if we were doing a senior seminar. The poem expresses, to me, among other ideas, the idea that, oh, no, my time is up. Can I have like thirty seconds? Okay. Okay. If you want, if I can have thirty more seconds, I'll finish. It's up to the chair.
Only if you sing.
Okay. I don't know if we want that. Okay, all right. Well, we won't do a musical. We'll do an almost a musical. It's the idea that individuals grieve, all individuals grieve for themselves and their fate. I know that the effects of COVID linger and are very real. In some measure, not one of us came through what we've all been through unscathed. There are parts of our lives we certainly mourn for, and especially our kids. Our kids are actually, I think, believe, they're all mourning in some part something that they lost. I want to renew my commitment to always fight for your kids, to give them the best education I can in my role as a board member, to advocate for what is best. I appreciate your trust in me, and I would encourage you to give your kids a hug and tell them you love them and that you'll help them get through whatever it is they are facing. And that, those are my thoughts on this beautiful fall night. And with that, I say good night.
All right. Ms. Zargarpur? Thank you. Do I get the, ah, thank you, very good. All right. So really quickly, it's been a busy month. I went to the Westgate Back-to-School Night and their Fall Festival and got to meet, this is a new-to-me school, so I got to meet so many families and the kids and the teachers, and had such a good time there. Got to meet with the Boy Scouts of America Cub Pack 1195. And we talked about what it's like to be an elected official and, you know, how do you run for office? What does my actual office look like? Wherever I'm standing is my office. So they had some really great questions, and I appreciated being invited to talk about that. I went to Hilton High School's homecoming game. The Osborne Park Athletic Hall of Fame was always a great thing to go to to hear how school, specifically these athletes who are my age, some of them younger, just remembering how those were really formative moments in their lives and what it meant for them carrying through into, you know, to today was really just something I needed to hear. I went to the OP Homecoming Game. Patriot High School, not my school, but I was invited to play my flute on a chorus concert and had such a good time. The chorus was amazing. I love it. I'm happy to play anywhere. So Hilton High School, I went to their Esol Night. And Maria Iardia is the parent liaison, and she was absolutely amazing. She called every family to make sure they knew about this night, to make sure that there were kids who had just started school that week, to make sure that they were connected with all the things that they needed to be successful in school. I went to the Yorkshire's International Night last night. There were twenty-five, someone told me thirty-five. It was only twenty-five countries represented. People were dressed up. They brought their best food. It was amazing. I went to the Saunders Fall Festival last week. Cole's Elementary School had their Fall Festival. And Kyle Wilson had a bingo night. I got to call one of the games, which was a lot of fun. And you've already heard, we went to the food show. I loved everything, but I love food, so it's good. And I also got to see my niece in a one-act play at Colgan. Get to celebrate Bennett Elementary School is a Purple Star school, so I can't wait to see what they're going to be doing with their military families. Want to also mention, we were talking a little bit about CTE. And one of my school, well, two of my schools have automotive programs. I happened to buy a car a couple of weeks ago over at, it's a Volkswagen, the one Karen Radley, I think, on, on everyone. Stop. So I happened to be there, I'll talk to anybody. And the guy who was filling out my paperwork, my financial paperwork, we were talking about my job, and I'm like, well, I'm going to put my teacher job down. But do I, can I put my school board job down? Because I, you know, want my income to look good, so I get a good, good rate, right? And his name's Eugene. And I was talking to this guy Eugene about, hey, I have these automotive kids in my high schools who are taking these programs. And some of them do get some apprenticeships and get good jobs. But it wouldn't be really neat to like kind of formalize this. Now, I do know Hilton High School's teacher, Mr. Stevens, is very proactive on this because I went to his awards banquet last year with Dr. McDade. Remember Dr. Mr. Stevens? He was, he was great. And he makes the kids bring their resumes. He has different dealerships there. But I think I got a chance to see these kids take apart an engine and put it back together, get a team of five in like seventeen minutes. It was the, one of the most amazing things I've ever seen. And I think we need to start making sure we're connecting all of our CTE to the trades, to apprenticeships. So I found out there's this grant program through Dolly. We've heard about Dolly tonight, a lot tonight. That's the Department of Labor and Industry. They have something called a craft grant. And that is three thousand dollars that these different organizations, either it's dealership for apprenticeships, maybe it's some other industry. But they get the money to help, help move these kids along in their career. And you can take twelve in each, in each business. So I really hope, we've got Mr. Ayub. I hope he can help connect these kids. I would love for some of these people to come out and take a look at what our automotive kids can do. Y'all have a good night. Thanks for the great poem, Ms. Wall. Oh, and, oh, before I forget, sorry. We're going to hold office hours. I'm going to be doing with Ms. Jackson and with Mr. Wilk. We'll put that out on social media and to be, to, yeah. Keep it, keep, keep tuned. All right. Thank you. Mr. Wilk?
Thank you. Over the past thirty days, I've been blessed to partake in many outstanding community events. First, I attended the following back-to-schools nights. Ashland Elementary on October 11th, Montclair Elementary on October 11th, Henderson Elementary on October 12th, Dumfries on the 13th, Mary Williams on the 13th, Patty on the 17th. During these annual events, I've had the pleasure of meeting and reconnecting with families in the district. Outside of back-to-school nights, I did make a daytime visit to watch instruction at Dumfries Elementary on 10-9. I went to Swans Creek's Fall Festival on 10-7. And finally, ran the concession stand at Patty Elementary School Movie Night on 10-14. at Patty Elementary School Movie Night on 10-14. I fervently believe that parent involvement in their child's education is paramount to their future success. To further engage my constituents, I've done two office hour sessions in September. The South Bridge HOA hosted my first session on 9-24, and the Montclair POA hosted mine on 10-15. As a person of faith, I also realize that not everyone has kids in our schools and may not come to my office hours within the buildings themselves, so I have gone to churches on Sundays and remained after to talk to parishioners. I went to Grace Church three weekends ago, Little Union two weekends ago. I didn't get to talk to people about the school, but I did attend First Mount Zion 150-year anniversary, two weeks ago? What? 155, I'm sorry, yes, 155. I do want to take a moment and recognize our high school marching bands for their outstanding performances this year. Forest Park has performed well in competitions. These recognitions include Best Drum Major in Class AA, Second Place Color Guard in Class 2A, and the Award of Best Percussion in Class 2A at the Stafford Showcase. Potomac has also done exceedingly well these competitions, winning first place in their class. In all three invitationals, they were also awarded the Blue Division Champion in the Stafford Showcase. More recently, let's see, 10-20, Triangle had their book fair. I attended that. On 10-21, Forest Park had their choral concert for the fall. On 10-25, Forest Park had their orchestra concert. On 10-25, Patty had their book fair. On 10-30, Forest Park had a successful homecoming victory over Colgan. I also attended the trunk-or-treats at both Henderson and Ashland Elementary, getting most use of my Elvis costume, which is now officially retired. On 10-30, the Dumfries Lit Fest occurred. I attended with my colleague Ms. Williams, hosted by Dumfries Councilwoman Sydney Neville. 10-30, I always love attending these and being a part of Eagle ceremonies. I went to the Marine Corps Museum as I was invited as a guest to watch five young men, four from Forest Park and one from Colgan, get promoted to this prestigious honor. And then also last night, I attended the Forest Park Girls Homecoming, not Homecoming, Girls Volleyball, won their first regional game against Colonial Forge, and the senior Powderpuff Girls Team beat the Juniors. And of course, Ms. Hagburg mentioned, I'm going to try to do something in November for my office hours. I do want to state in closing that while we are required to follow laws and policies that our Virginia Department of Education sets out, I do want it known to all parents that your child's safety is always the goal we are focused on. For parents and students who are part of the LGBTQ community, I do remain an ally and will listen and help when needed. The recently proposed changes do not give permission in any way to bully, harass, or demean, or shame, and it will not be tolerated. And with that, I end the night.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Ralston?
Hello. Ms. Ralston, do you have any closing Board Matters?
Everything sounds great and good, and I'm glad that everybody is working hard. I'm glad I'm out here to help with now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ralston. I just want to take a moment and say that I greatly appreciate working in this board with my fellow board members, and I appreciate the poem, Ms. Walmsley. It made me think of the seasons of the school year and the season that just ended, which was back-to-school nights. I ended it with wonderful piney branch, and I would just want to take a moment to thank all staff and community members that took time to speak and meet with me. Also during the month of October, I attended Patriot, Brentsville, Gainesville, and Unity Reed Homecoming Games. Ms. Walmsley and myself held office hours, and we'll be scheduling one hopefully soon in November, but there's some decreased times at Haymarket Library that we're trying to work with. Also, as Ms. Hagburg mentioned, we're going to be holding office hours and are working to finalize the details. It'll be posted on social media. Happy anniversary to Marcelo Middle School. I enjoyed attending and watching some very talented middle schoolers perform Shakespeare. I'm also thankful to be invited to the Brentsville District High School Orchestra Concert and Eighth Grade Strings from Oaksville. It was marvelous. Congrats to the Brentsville District High School Cheer, who won 3B Regional Cheer Competition. I was sorry to miss supporting you, but we had a meeting on Saturday. Congrats to the Pride of Unity Reed Marching Band on their wins at Colgan Classic and placing third in Class A in the Best Color Guard, Gold Lions and Gold Tigers. The next school board meeting is on Tuesday to allow for school board members to attend the VSBA conference. Before I forget, I want to make sure that I thank the Patriot High School for inviting me to celebrate with them our first responders, and to the troupe at the Oaksville School for having me to talk about the role of a school board member. Thank you to attendance officers for your dedication to student attendance, and as you may have noticed, we have evaluated and considered community feedback and changed and amended citizen comment times, so I think they have been posted online. And you may have also observed that the board is working towards reaching more members of the community through monthly board meetings, excuse me, board updates. And I have mentioned this before, but I, I'm going to, it bears repeating, there are translated agendas posted for board meetings, and Let's Talk allows for you to communicate in your home language. Thank you to those who came and celebrated school accomplishments today, and to those who spoke, and I'm going to end it and have a wonderful night. Thank you. There being nothing further to come before the board, I now declare this meeting adjourned. There we go.